The Council, the Council will please come to order. Council will please come to order and call the roll.
Bernstein, Cech, Fuer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Riley, Thomas, French, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, this is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the eight, what, what day is that?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth of November of the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by Kial subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel thirty-five, and we're also being monitored by Council phone. The first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Padilla moves, Mr. Pacheco seconds, there's no objection.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. President, before starting the regular agenda, there are several items to be addressed. Item number eight, there is a request from the Building and Safety Department and Council District one to continue that matter till December thirteenth, that's item number eight.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number five, six, seven, and ten, Building and Safety Department recommends receiving file in as much as the assessments have been paid, that's seven, five through seven and ten.
Five, six, seven, and ten, there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number thirty-nine, a request that that matter be received, be withdrawn from the agenda and referred to C and E D committee.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Mr. President, item number twelve is a commission appointment, the appointment of Alfredo Pacheco to the Los Angeles Export Terminal.
Mr. President, prior to that, I'm wondering if I could just make a brief presentation.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Please do, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, members of the Council, I appreciate your indulgence for a couple of minutes, I just wanted to bring forward Dr. Mary Spangler, the President of Los Angeles City College, and just present to her, really for the college, obviously, but also for your leadership, a certificate of appreciation because of their City of Angels program. I'm not sure if you're all aware of the City of Angels program, but it is an innovative and interdisciplinary program that helps students experience and appreciate this city's diversity. And it is really quite an extraordinary thing to have right in the heart of Los Angeles at City College, and I know they have a tape and I'm not sure we're going to get to a student poem, but, but I will see if we can make this tape available to you at another time, but I really would like you to see and understand what a gem a program like this is in encouraging people from all walks of life to come to City College and to experience the richness that this city is. It is an exciting program, and I couldn't leave here without honoring them and bringing it to your attention. So, Dr. Spangler, on behalf of my colleagues and the mayor of the city, let me just congratulate all of you at City College who have made a program that we can all be proud of, and also one which invites all of the people of this city to come and experience the delight of living in a truly world-class city. Congratulations. I'd just like to make a couple remarks to the City Council, and especially to Council Member Goldberg, who has been a tremendous supporter of the college in all the things that we've been doing, but in especially her leadership in helping this program to move forward. I need to acknowledge some of the people who have been, who have made this program work, Galus Martarusian, who, who conceived the concept and who took it forward to the federal government, and we were awarded a federal government, a FIPSY grant this year to develop the plan even further, Dan Seymour, who was instrumental in making that grant a reality, Raul de la Sota, who is a faculty member who teaches in the program, and I need to ask Valerie, a student, to come forward and to share a poem that she wrote that was inspired by her participation in this program. It's a multicultural, multidisciplinary program that, that really uses Los Angeles as the focus of study. And, and could I ask the people who were, who have been working with the program I just identified to please come forward and let Valerie read her poem?
Hello, my name is Valerie Hernandez, and I was a student, I am a student at Los Angeles City College. My experience with the City of Angels course was very enlightening, and it left a thought that's everlasting, so I have a poem to read, and the name of the poem is called "A Taste." Similar to a taste in one's mouth, temporary yet everlasting, an impression that resonates, experienced in one's conscience, and eradicates ignorance. Beneath the urban surface, we find every face, Asian, black, white, Mexica, human race. The City of Angels is the only place where misogyny can take place and have reoccurring effects, like flames burning early in the Watts riots and engulfing Florence and Normandy. A platter full of hors d'oeuvres, not any is first. They all have their uniqueness to quench even the most prejudiced thirst. A cookbook open, this is where there's more than just hoping that people, spices, don't disagree. Rather, we are free to express differences, opposition, and religion, differences of opinion and taste, unsimilarities that no longer separate, instead we relate and embrace. From the transplantation of Jews in Boyle Heights to the Fairfax and Merle's district, we find the explicit realities that can exclude stereotypical tendencies. From the refuse and resist hip-hop concert art speaks, to where once Simon Rodea built his Watts Towers cautiously, there we see not one tile is alike, but together they reinforce the whole tower tree. We opened up L.A. like a huge textbook, and our prejudice we overtook. When learning happens experimentally, their belief and hope bring relief. Tolerance, seeking together, we found, not everything was a sweet vision, there were times of sour treason, reality and history stolen, only to be rewritten and now respoken. The lies we use like tokens, a stereotypical nickel, we chop, we remade into a sickle, chopping down half truths in our specialty soup, a taste of El Valle de Nuestra Señora Reina de Los Ángeles. The rest, a greater overstanding of the environment we perceive, and a greater respect born from the savor of knowledge we receive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Goldberg. Next item.
Mr. President, item number twelve is a commission appointment, the appointment of Alfredo Pacheco to the Los Angeles Export Terminal.
Just why this, is that, that makes this commission, I believe, a hundred percent male, I mean, I have nothing against men, but are there no women able to serve on this?
Looks like there's a vacancy.
Okay, well, I would urge that we urge that we have some gender diversification on this commission.
Okay, all right, I'll move on behalf of Rudy Savornic, and we move approval, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, forthwith, Mr. Pacheco, you've been approved, we want to thank you for serving.
Thank you, sir, and the rest of you.
Next item.
Mr. President, item number sixteen is also a commission appointment, it's the appointment of B. Christian Coe to the Board of Taxicab Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning. Mr. Coe, is there any discussion on Mr. Coe, Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the Council, I wasn't present at the Transportation Committee when Mr. Coe went before it, and I have no biases against Mr. Coe, and I'm sure he'll be a good commissioner, however, I have to vote no, and it has to do with geography, Mr. Coe, you just happen to live on the wrong part of town for me right now. I need to point out to my council colleagues that currently Council District eleven has forty-seven commissioners out of three hundred and sixteen, and Council Member, Council District five now has forty-five. So those two council districts, in essence, have ninety-two of the three hundred and sixteen appointees of the entire city. As compared to, again, my council district with fourteen, or Council Member Mark Riley Thomas is with thirteen, or Council Member Padilla with ten, well, Council Member Holden has ten, at least that matches your council district number, but when we're talking about tax cap service and tax cap franchises.
Mike, how did Holden get ten?
I think it just happens to have something to do with his council district number, Mr. President.
His personality?
Yeah, but I just think there's a big discrepancy when you talk about forty-seven versus forty-five, and you know, the Supreme Court has made it very clear that each one of us represents the same number of constituents, we just don't get the same number of commissioners. And it's kind of a pet peeve of mine that I'm trying to make my votes, try and create that kind of geographic parity, and, and that's why I'll be casting a no vote, and I'm serving notice that Council District five has now approached that same list, and if I can get the mayor to appoint members from other council districts, I'll be able to continue the voting.
Miss Goldberg?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to the attention of this new commissioner, a couple of issues that I hope you'll pay attention to. One is, is that there are a lot of parts of this city where people call for a taxi, and the taxi never comes.
And, and Council Member, I, I do agree with you, and that is an issue in this city, and does need to be resolved, I travel throughout the United States, and, and I oftentimes ride in cabs, and I understand your feelings on those issues.
Well, it's, it's, the problem is, is that it is often in the most transit-dependent neighborhoods, so you have people who do not have an alternative, it's not like they can say, oh, I didn't really want to take my car tonight, they don't have a car, so it's more than an inconvenience, it means they
...diversity. And it is really quite an extraordinary thing to have right in the heart of Los Angeles at City College. And I know they have a tape and I'm not sure we're going to get to...
Just a minute.
A student poem, but I will see if we can make this tape available to you at another time. But I really would like you to see and understand what a gem a program like this is in encouraging people from all walks of life to come to City College and to experience the richness that this city is. It is an exciting program and I couldn't leave here without honoring them and bringing it to your attention. So, Dr. Spangler, on behalf of my colleagues and the mayor of the city, let me just congratulate all of you at City College who have made a program that we can all be proud of and also one which invites all of the people of this city to come and experience the delight of living in a truly world-class city.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to make a couple remarks to the city council and especially to Council Member Goldberg, who has been a tremendous supporter of the college in all the things that we've been doing, but in especially her leadership in helping this program to move forward. I need to acknowledge some of the people who have been, who have made this program work. Galus Martarousian, who conceived the concept and who took it forward to the federal government, and we were awarded a federal government, a PIPSY grant this year to develop the plan even further. Dan Seymour, who was instrumental in making that grant a reality. Raul Delasota, who is a faculty member who teaches in the program. And I need to ask Valerie, a student, to come forward and to share a poem that she wrote that was inspired by her participation in this program. This is a multicultural, multidisciplinary program that really uses Los Angeles as the focus of study. And could I ask the people who were, who have been working with the program I just identified to please come forward and let Valerie read her poem?
Okay. Thanks. There you go.
Hello. My name is Valerie Hernandez and I was a student, I am a student, at Los Angeles City College. My experience with the City of Angels course was very enlightening and it left a thought that's everlasting, so I have a poem to read and the name of the poem is called "A Taste." Similar to a taste in one's mouth, temporary yet everlasting, an impression that resonates, experienced in one's conscience and eradicates ignorance. Beneath the urban surface, we find every face, Asian, black, white, Mexica, human race. The City of Angels is the only place where misogyny can take place and have reoccurring effects, like flames burning early in the Watts riots and engulfing Florence and Normandy. A platter full of hors d'oeuvres, not any is first. They all have their uniqueness to quench even the most prejudiced thirst. A cookbook open, this is where there's more than just hoping that people, spices, don't disagree. Rather, we are free to express differences, opposition in religion, differences of opinion and taste, unsimilarities that no longer separate. Instead, we relate and embrace. From the transplantation of Jews in Boyle Heights to the Fairfax and Merrill's district, we find the explicit realities that can exclude stereotypical tendencies. From the refuse and resist hip-hop concert art speaks, to where once Simon Rodea built his Watts Towers cautiously, there we see not one tile is alike, but together they reinforce the whole tower tree. We opened up L.A. like a huge textbook and our prejudice we overtook. When learning happens experimentally, their belief and hope bring relief. Tolerance, seeking together, we found not everything was a sweet vision. There were times of sour treason, reality and history stolen, only to be rewritten and now respoken. The lies we use like tokens, a stereotypical nickel, we remade into a sickle, chopping down half truths in our specialty soup, a taste of El Valle de Nuestra Señora Reina de Los Ángeles. The rest, a greater overstanding of the environment we perceive and a greater respect born from the savor of knowledge we receive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldberg. Next item.
Mr. President, item number 12 is a commission appointment, the appointment of Alfredo Pacheco to the Los Angeles Export Terminal.
Item 12, here he is. Are you related to Nick?
No, no. I have a, I come from a large family, but he's not a part of it.
Well, that saved you a few votes. Any discussion on this appointment? If, Ms. Goldberg?
Just why, this, is that, that makes this commission, I believe, 100 percent male. I mean, I, nothing against men, but are there no women able to serve on this?
Looks like there's a vacancy.
Okay. Well, I would urge that, we urge that we have some gender diversification on this commission.
Okay. All right. I'll move on behalf of Rudy Savornic and move approval. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, Mr. Pacheco, you've been approved. We want to thank you for serving.
Thank you, sir, and the rest of you.
Next item.
Mr. President, item number 16 is also a commission appointment. It's the appointment of B. Christian Coe to the Board of Taxicab Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning. Mr. Coe, is there any discussion on Mr. Coe? Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the council, I wasn't present at the Transportation Committee when Mr. Coe went before it, and I have no biases against Mr. Coe, and I'm sure he'll be a good commissioner. However, I have to vote no, and it has to do with geography, Mr. Coe. You just happen to live on the wrong part of town for me right now. I need to point out to my council colleagues that currently Council District 11 has 47 commissioners out of 316. And Council Member, Council District 5 now has 45. So those two council districts, in essence, have 92 of the 316 appointees of the entire As compared to, again, my council district with 14, or Council Member Mark Ridley Thomas is with 13, or Council Member Padilla with 10, well, Council Member Holden has 10. At least that matches your council district number. But when we're talking about taxicab service and taxicab franchises...
Mike, how did Holden get 10?
I think it just happens to have something to do with his council district number, Mr. President.
His personality?
Yeah. But I just think there's a big discrepancy when you talk about 47 versus 45. And, you know, the Supreme Court has made it very clear that each one of us represents the same number of constituents. We just don't get the same number of commissioners. And it's kind of a pet peeve of mine that I'm trying to make my votes, try and create that kind of geographic parity, and that's why I'll be casting a no vote. And I'm serving notice that Council District 5 has now approached that same list. And if I can get the mayor to appoint members from other council districts, I'll be able to continue the voting. Yay.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes. I just wanted to bring to the attention of this new commissioner a couple of issues that I hope you'll pay attention to. One is, is that there are a lot of parts of this city where people call for a taxi and the taxi never comes.
And, Council Member, I, I do agree with you, and that is an issue in this city and does need to be resolved. I travel throughout the United States and, and I oftentimes ride in cabs, and I understand your feelings on those issues.
Well, it's, it's, the problem is, is that it is often in the most transit-dependent neighborhoods. So you have people who do not have an alternative. It's not like they can say, oh, I didn't really want to take my car tonight. They don't have a car. So it's more than an inconvenience. It means they are trapped, literally. And I just know that you have all of these so-called new methods of tracking this, but if someone doesn't then analyze the tracking and then take action against those folks who are not doing what they say they're supposed to be doing, then we can have all the great laws in the world, it's enforcement, enforcement, enforcement that makes the difference. And are you committed to making sure that those areas get that kind of service?
Absolutely. I, I, you know, I feel there's redlining and, and you have to understand, you have independent operators out there, and it is, it is a matter of enforcement and working with our people at Transportation Commission to enforce these rules that we set and track this information. It's very, very important that we do that.
All right. Well, I also want to give you a packet of information from a gentleman who has some issues also that I think you would probably want to know in terms of taxi franchises and bandits, and I will provide you with a copy of this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden?
Your name is Mr. Coe?
That's correct.
You're Christian?
Yes, and I've met you many times.
That's what it says, you're Christian. Christian Coe. And the fact you've met me many times?
Yes, yes, sir. In New Orleans, when we went down to look at the Super Bowl, I spent some time with...
Oh, then I changed my tone.
All right. Yes.
I mean, I didn't know you were a friend.
Well...
You got my vote.
Thank you.
Fact of the matter is that Ms. Goldberg was absolutely correct. There's another item on the agenda today, item 14, which will address the contracts for the taxicabs franchises. Do you understand that?
Yeah, I, I think it was item 12.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Or is it 14? I'm sorry.
14.
14.
Okay. Have you read that?
Yes, I, I'm very familiar with it.
Yes, just say yes.
Yes.
Okay. You know they're going to get a five-year contract plus five one-year options?
That's correct.
That's 10 years.
It's a long time.
And you got this record, Ms. Goldberg, where it says, what about the service response time, you know, when your telephone call is made, senior citizens who are not well-served by the taxis, companies that still getting these contracts, being recommended for contracts, they have, the number of times they failed to respond and they're still giving them a contract. They're saying they'll have accountability and the new contract, once it's signed, and they had accountability requirements in the last contract, nothing was done by the department in order to correct this. You aware of how bad things are?
Oh, I, I, I'm very aware of it. And you sit in a cab sometimes, you'll talk to cab drivers and you'll see the calls stacking up on their MDT and, and I say, why aren't they picking up the calls? Well, that's only a $2 or $3 fare call, they don't want to take the call.
Well...
And then after a while, these drivers memorize the addresses because they don't want to take the elderly lady...
How do you plan to do anything about it? You know what the, what's an RFP? You know what the contract says?
The only way to do it is to analyze the figures, analyze the numbers.
Then what would you do if they find, continue to violate this? What would you do about it as a commissioner?
What would I do with it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd, I'd see that they would be penalized for not taking these calls, not serving the public.
You see that, you look and see, well, let's penalize these guys. You've got to go to the department, they've got to compile the data, and they don't always give you the right information anyway. Besides, you're going to have a new mayor in June. You better be friendly with somebody, but you're friendly with me, so it's okay.
Thank you.
All right, I want to vote for you today, but I got to tell you, I have some concerns like Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Thomas, and others, you know. I just pray that Christian Coe's heart's in the right place.
It is.
We have the report, item 16. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Mr. Coe, Mr. Coe, you've been confirmed. We want to thank you for serving the city and we'll send it forthwith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item.
Mr. President, items number 1 through 4 and 9 and 11 are items noticed for public hearing. 1 and 2 are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
What does the attendance look like tomorrow?
The attendance is no better tomorrow.
It is? The mood is messy. You just told me that country.
There are, there are two absences. Also, there are perhaps illnesses that aren't related to this, so...
Well, we'll continue until tomorrow because if we wait, it'll, we're not waiting to meet in a week.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to, you were referring item 39 to committee. I'd like to be able to, for purposes of clarity, discuss the motion today, and then if it goes committee, it can go to committee, but I'd like to have it discussed today. Item 39.
Yeah, can you wait a little bit before we... Okay. Okay, item 1 and 2 will continue. Anybody want to be heard on 3 or 4? Seeing none, the public hearing will be continued as well as the ordinances. Next item.
Items number 9 and 11 are before you, which are public hearing items.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on 9 or 11? Anybody want to be heard? If not, prepare the roll on 9 and 11. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Mr. President, items number 13 through 15 and 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 13 is an ordinance.
We'll, we'll continue that ordinance until tomorrow. 14, 15, and 17, Mr. Burnson has asked that we continue that until the 12th.
And 14 special.
Huh?
14 special.
17, you're continuing?
Yes.
One day.
14 is called by Mr. Holden. 15 is called special by Mrs. Chick, and 17 is continued until the 12th at the request of Mr. Burnson. Next item.
Point of clarification, 14 and 15 were called special?
14 and 15, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
Items number 18 through 41, with the exception of 39. A motion is required on 22, and as much as there's two on one file.
Mr. President, I'd like to call item 39 special.
39 is called special?
36 special.
Wait a minute, let me, let me check and see which cards we have. We have cards on 22.
Who's calling 22 special?
We have cards on that.
All right, Mr. President, we've had a lot, a lot of debates on that already. I mean, a lot of public comment.
Mr. Holden, this is a, this is a public hearing item. 38.
And 24 special.
And we have cards on that, and 39 is special. 42 is a, that's a closed session item. We'll call that special.
Mr. Thomas?
Okay.
Do you still think it's special? Yes.
No, wait a minute. We have 18 through 41. Anybody want to be heard on any of those items? Those are the ones I...
38 special.
Called. Mr. Holden, will you wait? You are not the public, are you?
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. How many, how many commissioners does he have? Any specials by council members? Wait, wait, what's?
For Galanter? Which one?
23 and 34.
23 and 34.
And for Chick, 35.
The 37?
37, I'm sorry, 37.
We want the 35. 37 for Chick.
Am I permitted to call 38 special?
35. Which one does Chick want?
37. 35.
Ms. Chick, did you still wish to call 34 special?
35.
23 and 34 on behalf of Councilmember Galanter, and 37 for me.
37.
Okay.
Mr. Holden wants 38.
We already called 38 special. Anybody want to be heard on any of those items? If not, the public hearing is closing on those items now for, we have, we have a card on 22. 23 is special. 24 is special. 35 is special. 37 is special. 38 is special. 39 is special. Any other specials? If not...
I have item number 36 called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg, did you call 36?
I did. There is an amending motion, I believe...
We'll call it special.
36, yes.
Okay. All right. Prepare the roll on those, balance of those ones that I called, didn't call. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, forthwith on 41, please.
Forthwith on 41.
Thank you, sir.
Next item.
Item number 14 called special?
Item 14, it's, if item 14 is regarding the taxicab, we have a lot of cards, and I'm not going to call it... This is ordinance, second reading.
Please.
Any discussion on item 14?
Who called it special?
Well, start talking, Mr. Holden.
I want to report on that, Mr. President, because we have a report submitted...
This is, this is a second reading.
I know, but there's a support, report that I have that you don't have that the council need to know about.
Let him do it, James.
That they gave to me after the last meeting. I asked for specific information, Mr. President, and it has been submitted. I think for the benefit of the council and the public, we should hear it.
Who's? Before you start speaking, can I call item 1, 2, 13? Those are ordinances, and we have 12 members here now, so prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on those. Okay. Give your name.
My name is Jim Lefton. I'm chief of transit with the Department of Transportation. In response to Councilmember Holden's comments at the last meeting a week ago on this issue, we prepared a summary of some information for him in his office, which included information on complaints that the department has received over about the past five-year period for each company, both total complaints and complaints relating to city ride trips.
Ms. Goldberg?
And there is information on all the companies where obviously complaints have been received. The problem that we have currently is that there is no requirement in the current franchise ordinances to receive 100 percent complaint reporting information from the taxicab companies. So the information that we provided, Mr. Holden, were complaints that were submitted directly to the department. We also provided Councilmember Holden with a variety of documents which address the issues that we believed he was raising with regard to accountability. There are requirements in the current franchise ordinances as to response times for all city residents, all taxicab users. The problem for us is holding, that, holding the cab companies accountable. The current ordinances do not, do not provide for 100 percent reporting of all trips, so we, in terms of holding them accountable, we would have to do test calls, we don't have the available staff to do a large enough sample to hold them accountable, and so that was the genesis really.
Can we have some quiet in the council chamber, please? Especially around the horseshoe.
The bottom line is that accountability is a major concern, and that was the genesis for the refranchising plan. We have requirements in the current ordinances, we have requirements under the new ordinances, but the new franchising plan provides us the ability to hold the companies accountable whereas under the old plan, they do not. So, that, in summary, that's the information that we provided to Councilmember Holden.
Mr. President, members, I ask those specific questions because I think it's a key to the type of service that is provided for my district and other districts simulated where transportation is required, especially in the parts of seniors, the taxi coupons, city ride coupon, and this information has been provided here, complaints received is, I, I, I tell you, we receive more complaints in my office almost on a daily basis than have, than you have posted here on this chart, which caused me some concern regarding each year of the complaints. You know, and we call those complaints into your office as well, and for you to say that in 1995, for LA Taxi, for example, there's 24 complaints, the Los Angeles Checker, there's 24, and so on and down the line, you have a copy of the chart in front of you, most members do not, but in 1999, for example, you have 17 for one, 22 for the other, and the year 2000, you have like zero complaints. Can you believe that? Zero complaints on, against these taxi companies? I just don't think that, and City Ride is zero, and for the others, they're like five and three, essentially zero. I don't know who made this chart up, and I don't know how you acquired the information, but certainly the complaints are there, but before you can make anything work for the benefit of the public, you've got to have accountability. You've got to have the staff who's willing to put the facts on the table, tell it like it is. They cannot camouflage, obscure what the facts really ought to be. So I would say to you that the integrity of this program is going to be directly dependent and proportional to the function of the staff, given this new technology, this computer system that you have going, and the information is made available to you. Question is, what will you do about it? Will you just bank it, or will you make it work for the benefit of the people in this community? That's the question, and I have about a minute left, so can you answer that real quickly, Mike? It's a yes or no.
We will be presenting monthly evaluations to the Board of Taxicab Commissioners, which will include a variety of information on performance, including complaints. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, in addition to the new refranchising plan, which requires the taxicab companies to present 100 percent information on complaints, whereas now the information you have before you on that table is just complaints that went directly to the department.
All right, in my last 30 seconds, I would say to you that, will that be presented to the council as well? That information? You go, you give it to the commission, will it also be transmitted to the council? Maybe every month, every two months, every three months, you have to know? Is that your plan?
To the extent that there are recommendations for suspensions or revocations of ordinances, yes, they will.
I would like to see the report. Now, the time is running out for me to speak, it's probably expired, but I can tell you this, there's going to be some new things happening around here in June, July, and I'm going to bring a motion in, since it's not a part of this, and I won't speak again, proposal, to make that a requirement. I want at least every three months, a report to the council so we'll know who's falling behind, who's not falling behind, you have some time to have some accountability. I don't like the idea about the five-year plus five additional year contract, that's a 10-year contract. Obviously, you have the votes to deal with that today. I would like for the next council, after five years, not us, to impose it upon them, but for them to decide based on the record that you would obtain as to their performance, whether or not they should have another year extension, six years, seven years, eight years, nine years, 10 years. I think this giving them the whole ball of wax, I don't think that was a good idea, but that's all what's before us.
Mr. Savornic?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Before us today is the second reading ordinance to establish new taxi franchises in the City of Los Angeles. This is an endeavor over 20 years in the making. The refranchising of taxicabs in the City of Los Angeles has never gotten this far. There were numerous false starts over the course of 25 years, but today, for the first time in 25 years, we have a new refranchisement agreement to the providers of this city. I wanted just to take a moment, as we did last week, to commend all of those who worked tirelessly on this endeavor, the staff of the Department of Transportation, the many council office staffs, the Department of Transportation taxicab commissioners, and all those who brought this to this point. James Okazaki, Jim Lefton, Frankie Banderjee, and all of those who worked very hard are to be commended to working tirelessly to bring this to its, its end. And so with that, Mr. President, I would like to move the agenda and let's go forward, and, and then I will ask for a forthwith to the mayor for a signature.
Any further discussion? If not, prepare the roll on the second reading. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that item.
Thank you.
What did I do on that motion?
Huh?
How am I recorded?
You reported aye.
I was on the phone.
We want to thank you for the vote, Lee.
Thanks, Mike.
Next item.
Item number 15 called special by Councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to want staff from Housing Department to come to the, the table. Colleagues, I'm prepared to go forward today with our committee report, but I called this item special to both highlight for our own purposes and also for the public that might be listening and watching, that after many, many years of hard work in trying to... that after many, many years of hard work in trying to improve our code enforcement program, and specifically with the idea in mind of preserving our extremely needed housing stock in some of our older multiple-family buildings, we've gone through a major change to move that function of code enforcement from Building and Safety Department to the Housing Department. We've had multiple task force. We had the Problem Property Task Force, Housing Task Force, that worked for, I think, well over a year. We had our Blue Ribbon Housing Task Force. And yet, what's before us is still, first of all, once again, it seems, another reorganization. Back to square one, in my view, that we are still trying to solve the same ongoing problem. How, where do we find funding for the resources to make code enforcement effective, to accomplish what it is we want to accomplish, to preserve existing housing and to make it habitable? Now, this report says we need at least eighteen more inspectors. We also have problems with staffing on billing and collecting what's owed us. Eighteen more inspectors, we don't have the money this year to pay for them. We're allocating the positions. I'd like to know when you expect all of these positions to be filled, so the program is functioning. I know we've got a lawsuit going as well. But if you could summarize for us, Mr. Penny, where we are today, what are some of the very serious unresolved problems? And where do we need to go to get this to work properly? Because bottom line, people are starting to recognize the fact that we are in a serious housing crisis. And this program is part of the complex solution of that complex problem. So if you could educate us, please.
Previously, the systematic code enforcement program was approved. That provided fifty-three inspectors to do periodic inspections of the multifamily stock of the city. In addition, subsequently, we got about twenty-four additional inspectors for a complaint program, which was funded by general fund. Systematic code enforcement inspectors are funded by a fee. That fee was challenged. There was a Supreme Court hearing on October the 11th. The decision has not come down yet. Most of these positions, nine of them would be funded fully from the fee. The other nine would be funded from the fee, 80 percent fee, 20 percent general fund. What, this is an ongoing reorganization, as we rolled out a brand-new program. This is to combine the alphabet soup program from the rent stabilization division with code enforcement, moving them down there. It's providing additional staff for that. It's also providing additional clerical staff to free up our inspectors for field time. We've done this on a-
And the billing problem?
The billing problem is to combine the rent and the rent bill and the code bill into one bill and to use the same database for both programs. Right now, we have two separate bills. We have $100,000, and for a consultant come in to start that process this year. We're moving ahead on that now, and this was proposed to last year in the budget, and discussed in the budget.
Because if you're paying for the inspectors with the fee, and you're not separate from the court case, and we're not able to collect the fee because you're not properly staffed, that starts a vicious cycle and makes a program that's not effective.
We've been collecting about $6.7 million a year. That's about two-thirds of what we think is out there. We've had problems with the database, the property database. We've used DataQuick, we've used DWP, we've used LoopHams. We're not the only department in the city having problems with the property database. That's correct.
Okay, well, I'm going to support the report, but I'm very concerned that we find solutions to make this program work once and for all.
I might add that we have a 96 percent success rate on the properties that we have inspected and compliant. We have about 4 to 5 percent of substandard slum properties that are the problems.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I want to just say that we've had, Ms. Chick and other members, a very long set of discussions about this, in which many of the sentiments that you mentioned have been done. But I see this as a gigantic step forward. What we are beginning to do is to become practical in how we're going to make sure that this actually happens. It's one thing to pass excellent legislation, but the devil really is in the details. And it is true that we did not give the Housing Department the resources that it would take to do the things that we asked them to do. This is the beginning of identifying that. This is not the end of this. And those of you who will remain, if you care about this, are going to have to see it through the whole budget process in the spring, and I know you know that. I'm simply saying it for the public's benefit. Because that's the reality. If we're going to stop losing housing because of deterioration, not only do you have to have good legislation, but you have to have the appropriate funding to make sure that it is enforced. They have a structure that, having heard it now in Mr. Pacheco's committee a couple of times, I am convinced will work. Now it is the obligation of the mayor and the council to find the resources to make sure they have the people to actually carry it off. And if we do that, then we will make a gigantic leap forward, and, which is why this is an important step forward, but not the end of the trail. But it is an important step forward, and I urge a unanimous vote.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues. As we review item fifteen, I think Ms. Goldberg hit the points saliently. And my only point in speaking at this juncture is to point out that I need to carry the ball now that Ms. Goldberg is moving on to the State Assembly. And I don't have the institutional memory that Ms. Goldberg has. And when she says that this is a major step forward in creating a mechanism to retain our affordable housing, I have committed to her and to the advocates for affordable housing that this is a step that's going to be followed up with further steps. And Mr. Penny has been there with us throughout the way. And I fully believe that this is an area that we, as a city, must look closely at. And one of the issues that was raised during our committee meeting is, where are all the new mayoral candidates on the issue of affordable housing? How are they going to assist us? What's their view of where we can go on solving the affordable housing crisis in Los Angeles? So I raise that today, not only to really challenge all of our candidates, but also to recognize that Mr. Penny is committed, and we are working hard to retain our affordable housing stock here in the city.
Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council. I had this little project going on here with how we collect the fees and so forth. How do we collect the fees? Who collects them?
The Housing Department bills annually for the fee. And then we have a follow-up billing for people who haven't paid that we know are delinquent.
And what about when we have processes that are more detailed, larger fees?
We're, if you're talking about rebilling for reinspection and that sort of thing, we didn't originally have staff to do that. We do now, and we're following up rebilling for the reinspections also.
Okay, members of the council, what I want you to hear, and the reason I was pointing it out, is we continue to develop fee collection mechanisms by department. Building and Safety has a fee collection mechanism that's separate from the Housing Department's safety, building, I mean, Building and Safety inspections, fee collection mechanisms. And so when you have an apartment building that is still inspected by, well, I guess apartment buildings are not inspected by Building and Safety now. If you have a commercial establishment inspected by Building and Safety, it's a whole different fee collection unit. Is that correct?
That's correct, and single-family also. And they are staffing the interagency task force, which is the slum housing task.
Right, now, so the reason I'm asking the question is, is it possible for us to look at how to integrate our fee collection processes as a city?
There was an instruction out of the both Housing Committee Redevelopment Committee and the ITA Committee to do that, to have ITA head up a task force, including Housing, Building and Safety, to develop a property database for city departments.
And are we proceeding in that direction?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so when will we have a report back to that effect?
I'll have to talk to the general manager of ITA, since they're chairing the committee, but this was just recently an instruction that was adopted by the council.
Okay, so that was a recent instruction adopted by council. Now, Ms. Chick has put together a task force that's overseeing collections of delinquencies for the city.
No, we shouldn't.
I'm just trying to point it out because, as we're headed in these different directions, and believe me, now I'm beginning to get multiple bills from the city. I'm understanding this process, and from the perspective of the consumer, the perspective of the constituent and the person who we're basically dealing with, it does get confusing. I mean, I get a bill from the Department of Animal Regs. I get a bill from the Department of Water and Power that is very complex. But I also get a bill now from the Housing Department. And I'm just trying to figure out, if you're trying to collect it and you have a consolidated system, it makes a lot more sense, because certain databases, you're getting your information for a database from DWP and the county recorder. And again, there's a lot of duplication and effort that's going on in these processes. And so I'd like that report to come back, but it also should be going through the committee. And really, the goal should be some kind of an integrated system that works for everybody. And I'm sure if we were some private company, like the phone company or a cable company, they'd figure out how to do it. I think we, as a city, could figure out how to do it.
Holden.
Oh, yes. And the report, I think you stayed here, that whereas you may be adding additional staff or requesting additional staff, you're waiting for the Supreme Court to take action on the lawsuit. What lawsuit are we talking about?
The ability of the city to charge a fee for the systematic code enforcement-
The ability of the city to charge fees for code enforcement per unit? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying that whereas, how many years has this been in effect, where you've been charging fees for the code enforcement program?
The current fiscal year is the third year.
This is the third year that you've charged, that everybody had to pay up, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, in every case, every year, have you been going out inspecting each unit each year? Or you just expect a few of them?
No, we've been going out inspecting the units.
Just a few of them? A portion of it? Are you inspecting all the units in the city per year?
No, it was a-
Well, that's what they're paying for. Each year, they pay for an inspection, but you're not inspecting every unit per year, is that correct?
No, it was a three-year program, and because of staff turnover, and we're doing, it would take, we can do 150,000 units a year.
You were not here, were you? How long you been here?
How long have I been here?
With the city?
The Housing Department, a little over three years.
How many years?
Three years.
Was this program in effect when you went to the Housing Department?
No, it was not. It was a brand-new program.
So you should be aware of it. I thought it was an annual inspection. Was that supposed to be the case?
No, it was not. It's supposed to be an inspection every three years.
And that's part of the ordinance?
No, it is not. It's part of the fee.
Did one say yes, one say no? Is it part of the ordinance that it was every three years, yes or no?
The fee is $12 a unit a year, and for that, you would get an inspection every three years.
It's called legislative intent. It was the understanding and therefore the intent of this legislative body that there would be an annual inspection, and you would charge a fee for that per month?
No, it wasn't an annual inspection.
That's why you went to court? And that's why you lost. Now, in which level of court did you lose?
We won in the Superior Court, we lost in the appellate court.
Oh, you lost in the appellate court.
And it's California Supreme Court had a hearing on October the 11th.
If California Supreme Court uphold the appellate court's ruling, then what would be the position of the city?
Their judgment is not available yet. It should be out by January 14th.
Well, if you should lose, what would be the position of the city?
The city would have to pay back the fee.
Pay back how much money we're talking about?
Around a little over $20 million.
$20 million? How about that? And you know what I'm going to say when that happens? I'm going to say, "I told you so." The vote was 14 to 1, because I thought it was unconstitutional, illegal at the time you imposed the fee, and it still is, and the court was so rude.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I just wanted to at least close my comments by complimenting the Housing Department and you, Mr. Penny, at its lead for being dedicated to making this successful. And it's not a question of can we make it successful, it's how, because we have to. I also want to comment on my colleague, Mr. Hernandez's, comments in terms of the billing, and it's why I was going there. There's not much point in having fees or fines if we don't collect them. It's a message to the world that we're not serious, and then, you know, it's almost like creating scofflaws. I was hopeful that the Office of Finance, that its number-one job was collections, and that we were going to be moving towards centralizing all of our collections. I happen not to be a fan of having bills going out from so many different entities in the city. I agree, it's duplication, et cetera. But in the meantime, we've got to make your fee collection work even better than it is now.
We agree with that.
So I'm looking forward to trying to be helpful in that. And then, going forward in the bigger picture, to maybe finding a way to relieve you and other departments of having to do that. But thanks for the hard work, and we've got lots more to do, and I'm dedicated to seeing you have the right resources.
Thank you.
Item fifteen before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Mr. President, item number 22, call it special. There are cards on this matter. A public hearing has been held in Planning and Land Management Committee, however. A motion is required from the floor inasmuch as-
We have two, two on one file. Twenty-two. Members of the council, we had a public hearing on this some time ago.
Mr. President, I move 22A.
You move 22A? Okay. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I'd like to, because I don't know enough about this, I'd like to hear what the differences are between A and B.
Can we get a report on this?
Because I don't really understand what the issue is. So, pretty hard to make up your mind how to vote when you don't quite understand the issue.
Is there anyone here on the Planning Department?
Mr. President?
Where are you? Yeah.
Mr. President. Francisco Orozco, Assistant City Attorney. The two options for the council to consider. Option A is a matter that was sent by the council to the Plum Committee back in September. And what's being presented to you is a option that would narrow the scope of the designation to the facade, the restaurant, and the patio, or the Holiday Bowl. Recommendation B, which is the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee report, took the designation as made by the Cultural Heritage Commission to include the entire Holiday Bowl. So what the council has before it is that if- If the council adopts the Plum Committee report, it would have the effect of narrowing the designation to the restaurant, the patio, and the facade, and the matter would have to go back to the Cultural Heritage Commission for their review. Should they agree with the council's action, the matter would come back before it again, and eight votes would endorse the commission's action. If the council elects to take Option B, which is the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee report, it would be going along with what the commission originally designated, which was the entire Holiday Bowl property. So those are your two options.
Goldberg, you had the floor.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, Mr. Fuer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know, I'm going to rise and actually propose an alternative to A and B. Here's what I think. Mr. Holden has worked very hard on this for a very long time and has entertained a number of possibilities here, which is great. And I think that process has been a very productive and constructive one. But I think that if we simply moved A today, we miss a potential opportunity. And what I was going to propose is this. Having the land simply, can I have a little bit more quiet back here, please? Having the land simply sit fallow there while the faint possibility of a developer coming along exists isn't good for anybody, I don't think, here. Neither is it good for us to waste a chance at preserving the activity of bowling at the site. Because this, in terms of culture, this is about two things. There is the issue of the facade, the outside appearance- There is the issue of the facade, the outside appearance of the building. But what's really meaningful culturally about the site is not the facade as much as the activity which has taken place historically inside the building. Bringing people together in a city that desperately needs models of how people from different racial backgrounds can coexist in a productive, constructive way. That's what Los Angeles should be about. So, bear with me, my time's almost up. So I'm going to move to balance those two perspectives, that we continue this matter very briefly to the week of December 12th, which is the next week after this one the council meets, and the last week we meet during this year, to a date certain. It could be the 13th, it could be the 15th, but to a date certain, between now and then, I'm told there is a developer who is serious about actually getting the site and using it for bowling. That person would come before the city council. Apparently, he can't be here today. If he is not available, cannot send a surrogate, and can't come, then I think it's time to fish or cut bait. We can't continue continuances. But if he does come and does offer a viable alternative to A or B, where the site can be operated for bowling and bring back the best of what this neighborhood has had to offer over the years, then the council should seize that opportunity. So I move a continuance to no later than December 15th. Get the proposed alternative developer here, speaks his piece, and we make our choices then. If he doesn't come or can't come and can't send a surrogate, it's no more continuances. But that chance should be afforded to the community and to the council. Let's not waste a chance that we have an opportunity to seize. Hope there's a second for that motion.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I rise to formally second Mr. Fuhr's motion. I think it offers the opportunity to make absolutely the right decision with all the information before us that we'll need to make that decision, and we don't have that today absent this developer. I certainly concur with the comments of the hard work of the council office of the 10th, Mr. Holden. And it's always difficult for us to have a land use issue, a complex issue in front of us from someone else's district, where they are more expert in some of the finite details than we are. However, I believe that there are strong arguments for trying to save the use, the ongoing use of this site for bowling, for community, for reaching out to our young people. And if I have a bias, it's because I grew up as a young person in a bowling league, bowling, and have trophies that I wanted to dust off to bring, but I decided that it dated me so that I left them home. But colleagues, all of us in all of our council districts and all of our communities know that we have a dearth citywide of places, safe, healthy places for worthwhile activities for our young people, for our seniors, and for our families. It's worth a delay of a few more days, a week plus, to see if we can't preserve this and make it a viable project for the property owner and the community. So I look forward to the finite and final discussion, it sounds like, on the 12th.
Ms. Skoski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to speak on the issue of why the Planning Committee made its recommendation. There were two parts of the recommendation that had come from Arts Health and Humanities in terms of the facade, the Googie-style architecture, that was what we saw in the pictures. And there's no question that there was a cultural historic context as well. But in the area of the previous operator, the reason that the bowling alley did fall out of business was because there was no business. And it, I think the Planning and Land Use Management Committee felt that it was difficult in this area to force the issue, that the only thing that could be used there was, that the only thing that could be there was a bowling alley. So we looked at a compromise from what Arts Health and Humanity had recommended, and says, "Let's preserve that feature, which was the prominent feature pictorially and in all the information that was given to us," which was the facade, which was the coffee shop, which could also be a cultural, a coming-together place, a place that, you know, could be replicated with images of the past historically, and contain the best of both. And the, unlike where we had been earlier, where the property owner, developer, had wanted to tear down everything, he had indicated his willingness to save this feature, which is prominently located on the front of the property, and then develop around it. Members of the council, we have to remember that as this came in, this is a site that has been abandoned, it has been problematic in that neighborhood, and there were a lot of efforts to try to bring back something and have some development there that was healthy, was good for both the economy, for jobs, and for the community. And so that's what the Planning and Land Use Management Committee recommended, and I think that that is still a valid recommendation. As is often the case, when the council asks for a request for continuance, we're to consider once again whether or not there is a viable opportunity. I think we ought to look at that. I think what I would like to hear is not only from the potential buyer of what could be there, but also the reality of where is he in terms of offering the current buyer a reasonable price for the property, the similar price for the property? We have to take that into account as well. We can't say that we're gonna force an issue which undercuts or undervalues the property in some way. So I think there's no problem with a recommendation for a continuance to have that information put forward. But as I say, I think we've got to hear from both sides of the issue. Is it economically viable? And how likely is that opportunity to move forward? So I think that, as I say, normally the council does go along with a request for continuance, but I think that the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, given the facts before us at that hearing, took a viable option for recommending a partial historic designation for a part of the property.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we've reviewed this matter oh and over again. This is not just new before us, Mr. Fuhr. Anyone who's been interested in saving this property for a bowling alley, my office and others in the community have extended that opportunity to them. We had one individual come down here and say, "The money is imminent, it's gonna be made available." This is months ago. Never happened. This individual who's saying, "Give me two more weeks," is not here today. Another scheme. The fact of the matter is that the individual could have gone to the Planning Committee and Land Use, could have gone to Arts Health and Humanity, if they were truly interested. Did not go, chose not to attend. The fact of the matter, the time has come to address this issue finally once and for all. I mean, I can imagine what the developer's like, the guy who wants to save their property, owns their property, what it's like, that here in government, we're saying, "You can't do this, you gotta do that." Now, that's not friendly at all. That's not even coming close to even being, accepting a compromise. The Land Use, Ms. Skoski says, they went over this plan over and over again. They are gonna save part of it as a historical site. That's all they can do. It is not going to be a bowling alley never again on the planet Earth at that site, come hell or high water, no matter what you do. So I'm saying to you, my friends, that a continuance is out of the question. At least for me, voted up or down today. It's not my money. But I tell you what, this sometime, this has to end. Now, I'm gonna give you an example of what I mean by that. It's not funny either. We've counted and counted, we've reviewed and reviewed, and I tell you what, we should not review again on this particular issue. Let's bring it to a conclusion today. Upadon and I asked for a no-on-the-substitute motion and yes-on-theoriginal motion, as recommended by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, I managed to avoid the discussion at the Plum Committee. It was one of those committee meetings that went about five hours, and I had to leave just before this item came out. But if I would have been present, you should know I'd be supporting the Plum Committee recommendation. There might be one exception that I would have liked to have introduced, and I want to do that today. One, I think we have to be very careful when we deal with the nature of preservation and historic preservation. And there has to be a real purpose as to why we do what we do. We went through that discussion when we dealt with Chase Knowles. And I think that the Plum Committee's basically compromise of preserving that facade does the historic preservation of the building. I really do. But two, we also have to talk about the concept of job creation, economic development in a major exchange city. And why is it that exchanges can happen in some communities and not in others? Particularly when some communities are older than others. And I think that this compromise basically allows for a reuse of that land in a way where it makes some sense. What doesn't make sense to me is the urgency to tear something down. And when I say that, the compromise I would like to propose in the form of a motion is that demolition of those structures not be granted until there's an actual tenant that has been identified to fill the space. Now, when I say that, what it's saying is, you have the right to develop the property, you have the right to continue in the direction you wish, but before we let you tear it down, you gotta have a signed contract with a tenant. Now, I'm proposing that motion because then you basically reach all worlds. If there are tenants for the space and you need the space, you can then move forward. If there are no tenants for the space, there's no need to tear it down. I'm just kinda throwing that as an amendment, Mr. Holden, I don't know if you want to consider it. Maybe that would help you get the votes today for it to pass. Overall, I'm willing to support the Plum Committee's recommendation, because I think that we have to move on. And I think that the compromise does what we want it to do in preservation. To talk about what the space was used for, that it's not being used for that at this time, no longer makes sense. And so that's the compromise I want to make, that's the motion I'd like to introduce. I don't know if I'm getting a second. I don't think anybody's paying any attention. But if someone wants to second that motion, that would be my motion at this time, supporting the Plum Report with that compromise. Okay.
Ms. Skoski.
I just want to second the motion.
Okay. We have, what do we have first?
There's a motion to continue the matter until December 13th.
All right, prepare the roll. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
That failed. Now we have Mr. Holden's motion.
There is an amended motion on the desk, Hernandez, Ms. Skoski, to amend the Plum Report demolition not granted until tenant identified to fill the space with a signed contract.
Okay, prepare the roll on that. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved.
Now you have the, a motion, Mr. Holden moved 22A as amended.
22A as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 23, call it special by Councilmember Galanter.
Ms. Galanter, 23.
Yes, thank you. This is actually a note and file, or receive and file. So of course, we're gonna recommend approval, and we're gonna note and file it. But I wanted to point out. Can you guys move away? I wanted to point out that this is the airport's capital improvement project, program. Basically, what it suggests is that, it doesn't suggest, it says, that 85% of the investment is gonna be made at Los Angeles International, where I am happy to tell you, there is a fog pocket that comes in. I had a very nice time in your fog pocket last night. The, and the other 15% is what's going to go to the other three airports that we own. It is my contention, we don't have to have an argument over this, we're gonna approve it because it's a receive and file, don't waste your time or ours. But I just want my colleagues to take note of the fact that despite all the lip service we are hearing about regional approaches and really investing in the region, 85% of the proposed capital improvements will be at LAX. Some of them arguably are a part of the master plan. I know you can argue very cogently, and actually, so can I, that they're not a part of the master plan, but it's at least open to argument. And we still haven't seen the master plan EIR, although I'm told that it will drop on our heads any day now. So I hope that all of you will, most of you have no idea what I'm talking about here, but I hope that all of you will take note of the fact that declaring adherence to a regional solution doesn't mean anything if you sink all your investment in the place that we know we have to regionalize our way out of. And that being said, let's vote to note and file it and be done with it.
Mr. Hernandez.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to know, in noting the report, and maybe you want to share with the rest of us, I've been out there in the public telling people that we, as a city, understand that we have a regional capacity problem, and that part of the solution to that capacity resolution is the development of the Palmdale Airport. As part of this 90, I guess, 2001, 2003, how much is it being invested in Palmdale?
We have approximately $21 million being invested in Palmdale. That's for the development of a cargo apron and the accompanying infrastructure. We also are doing about $12 million in fire suppression improvements to two hangars to assist in the investment of SR Techniques, which has just moved its major aircraft maintenance facility to Palmdale.
Right, so about $21 million. In Ontario, we've invested about $72 million?
That's correct.
In Van Nuys, we've invested about $44 million?
That's correct.
And in LAX, LAX, we're talking about investing how much?
85% of the $1 billion, so about $700 million.
About $700. So it doesn't seem to me that we're really focused on Palmdale.
I think it's important to keep in mind that much of the investment in LAX represents deferred maintenance, projects that were not undertaken in anticipation that a master plan would be in place. If you look at the primary dollars attached to that, it's, a lot of it is for airfield improvements, specifically taxiway seats and terminal improvements.
What I'm trying to explain is, as we're out there, see, what you wouldn't want to happen is for the Los Angeles World Airport Authority to be heading in a direction that's contrary to the direction of the city council. I just don't think you want to see that happen. Or else we might have to look at a different kind of structure. And so a lot of it, you call deferred maintenance. I see property acquisition as part of this?
That's for the noise mitigation. That represents the Manchester Square Project, the community that actually came to Councilwoman Galanter and asked.
Right, $210 million, $210 million.
And asked to be acquired, that's correct.
Right. And, no, 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 I, again, I understand that, $210 million. That's about 1,000% of what we invested in Palmdale.
If I could just make a comment about a couple of regional things. Number one is we invested a great deal of money in Ontario in the last few years.
Right, we opened a new terminal. I was with the mayor of Ontario the other day, he really appreciates that.
So we have nice new facilities there, and it doesn't have the need that we have at our crumbling infrastructure at LAX. Also, relative to Palmdale, we're about to undertake some market studies to help us understand better what the demand is, and then we will build in accordance with that demand. What you see here are just things recognized now that relate to the existing demand. It doesn't imply, or it shouldn't imply, that we're not focused on building Palmdale, but rather than a build-it-and-they-will-come scenario, we're gonna try and figure out the demand first and then build accordingly. So we are in support of the regional direction.
I don't think there's any question about the demand.
Goldberg.
I just remain concerned, the last time I will talk about it in this venue, about so little money for Palmdale. Because I really honestly do believe, having now spent a lot of time with people who live in the North Valley and the Valley, if we build it, they will come. Now, I don't, I'm not gonna say that that's the end of the issues at LAX. I don't see them as linked at all, although they could eventually be. But I think if we don't do any, it's a chicken and egg. If we don't provide spaces, no other airlines will locate there. If there are no other airlines locating there, then of course, no one will use that airport. So I'm disappointed to see that in this sum of money, there is so little going to Palmdale to provide at least shelves or something of build-out that would make that possible for us to entice people. Because we're gonna need it, no matter how the controversy over LAX expansion comes out. That's my opinion. And there are people now ready and willing to use it if any planes flew there. So I just think we ought to be working on Palmdale regardless of the other controversies. Otherwise, it's gonna just not be ever an option for anybody, and that would mean everybody is forced then to go to existing locations. And they don't all fit. The delays are longer and longer at LAX. The burn in people's ears is getting hotter and hotter, and that's just not a good situation. And I think we ought to be doing whatever we can to encourage Ontario, the building you did there is excellent, I support it, but I think we ought to be looking at Palmdale and trying to put some pressure on folks who. and trying to put some pressure on folks who want nice space in LAX to say, you gotta do some things out there as well, because we'll never all fit in here altogether. So I'm disappointed, I have to say that.
The receiving file. If there's no objections, we'll receive and file 23. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item?
Item 24, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
We have Joanne Cosberg. Joanne Cosberg wants to be heard on 24.
My name is Joanne Cosberg, and I'm President and Chief Operating Officer of the Music Center, Performing Arts Center of Los Angeles County. The Performing Arts Center was the venue for the media party hosted by the Democratic National Convention Host Committee in August. The media party is one of several hospitality functions that the Host Committee was contractually obligated to provide to the Democratic National Committee, according to its website. I want to make you aware of the background of our contractual agreement with the Host Committee. The Performing Arts Center did not offer itself as a venue, but agreed only after several members of the committee, including representatives of the city, repeatedly asked that we serve as a venue, given the role of the center as a community landmark within the downtown of Los Angeles. The committee appealed to us because they felt we were the only site in the downtown that was large enough to accommodate the anticipated crowd. At the urging of those community leaders, we entered into a contractual arrangement with the Host Committee, whereby it was permitted to use the center for the event in exchange for payment of labor and direct costs only. The center did not realize a profit on this event. The arrangement is far more favorable than contracts we regularly enter into with private parties for the use of our facilities. In this case, the entire facility was used. Performances in two theaters were canceled in order to accommodate the media party. Those who attended would agree that the event was a positive reflection on the city. Unfortunately, the Host Committee has failed to pay the center for its labor costs associated with the event. We are now faced with the situation in which it appears that no good deed goes unpunished. The Performing Arts Center is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. We run lean to the bone. The center simply does not have the resources to absorb this in any way. Many of you are strong supporters of the center, and I deeply regret that I am here today before you and that this issue has not been resolved. I respectfully request your favorable consideration of this item. Thank you.
How do we have, Mr. Padilla?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Wanted to sort of summarize how we are at this point in terms of the finances and the city's commitment to the Host Committee of the convention that was held in August. As you all recall, we had approved $4 million in two $2 million installments, one at the time of the council vote and one after the convention to help with any debt retirement that was necessary, and we put it in the good hands of our watchful controller to monitor the appropriateness of those reimbursements. In the committee report, you'll note that there was two actual communications from the controller to the council. The first explaining a $1.4 million reimbursement that was given, the second offering explanations for an additional $300,000 approximately, leaving the balance at about $300,000. Now, the debts and the expenses that have yet to be paid add up to more than that $300,000. But in terms of what the council is being asked to do today, it's only to meet the commitment that we had made prior to the convention. And I think the fact that we only had one speaker is somewhat telling, because we need to keep in mind who it is that this money is going to go to. It's not going to a recount to Florida, it is actually going to entities like the Music Center here in Los Angeles, like a large number of vendors, a large number of small businesses, who put it on the line for the sake of the convention, but more so for the sake of the city, to host a successful convention. And I think it's they who we need to make whole, and that's what we're being asked to do today. None of the money goes towards the alcohol at parties, none of the money goes towards unrelated activities after the convention, all the money goes to reimburse expenses that were consistent with the intention with which we approved the money prior to the convention. So that's the explanation from committee, that's the committee report in front of us, and with that, I ask for your support.
Ms. Goldberg.
I'll tell you about that. Yes, so, let me understand this, Mr. Padilla, since I don't see staff, and you've heard this in committee, and I'm sure you're aware of it. Oh, we have staff. Let me understand this. There's an estimated total cost to the city in supporting the DNC of $35.8 million, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
That's my understanding. And of that, $3.5 million was previously budgeted, well, let's see, in terms of the $17,586,000 for additional services, we had budgeted only $3.5 million, so we were short about $14.1 million. Is that right?
I think so.
Okay. Then we had this $4 million, $2 million and $2 million, and how much of that $4 million have we already expended to date?
All but roughly $270,000.
Before us today is?
That $270,000.
$270,000. And that $270,000 represents payments to small vendors, the Music Center.
Ginatri, Skirball, some other small sites in which the, there were events, and if, quite frankly, if the council doesn't approve this, there is no way for those people to be paid.
And where's the police overtime in this?
This is not, that's, it's not part of the $4 million.
When does that come to the council?
There, I believe Friday will be before the council relative to that. That is, that is in the, was part of the security issue relative to our security.
Right, so that will be in the council this Friday?
That's right.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I feel some great reluctance about how this whole thing was mismanaged, in my opinion, financially. But I do not wish to see agencies such as the Music Center and small vendors be held responsible for what I consider to be the fiscal impropriety of how this was all taken care of. So I will vote for this, in spite of the fact that I didn't support the original motion, because I don't think that when we screw up, we should take it out on people who in good faith provided vendor services to the convention. And so, as reluctant as I am, and I am reluctant, as Mr. Deaton knows personally, I will support this today, but only because I think that our misdeeds in overseeing this expenditures should not be passed on to people who in good faith provided services.
Yeah?
I'd push my button to win before staff had gone up, so I think that's answered Ms. Goldberg's questions, and again, I ask for your support.
Ms. Holden?
Did you say it's just close to 30, 40 million dollars? Anybody say anything like that?
What I think, the total cost to the city, my recollection was $34 million, but this has to do with our particular agreement with the organizing committee on $4 million. It has to do with 200.
Was that 34 million, was that include a lot of, everything, including fire, police?
That's correct. D O T, Department of Transportation.
Okay. What was your anticipated amount to be expended for the police department? Do you know?
I think at the beginning, there was a, my recollection was that we were looking.
You had an estimated budget for services, how much did you estimate initially?
Four to five million.
Four to five million dollars?
That's right.
For services? Then why did it escalate up to 34 million?
Well, the police dollars didn't escalate to that amount, they doubled or so. And I think what happened in the meantime, if you recall, that the decision on the convention was prior to the Seattle situation with the World Bank, and I think there was a general...
My question is, how much money did we actually spend for the police department? Can you tell us? You said it was estimated about three or four million dollars initially?
$14 million.
$14 million. And then the other?
Transportation.
$20 million came from transportation, wrecking parks, et cetera, is that correct?
Et cetera, that's correct. Plus this $4 million.
Did you have an estimate for the, estimation for the wrecking parks? Also, yes and no? Mr. President?
We can go down that.
Would you ask them to get all the facts for us, so we start asking questions, they're going to have them right away?
We have, Councilmember?
I think you left them CO Beach.
On Friday, on Friday's council agenda, we'll be reporting the entire cost related to the Democratic National Convention, so it has been a...
They're wearing me out, Mr. President, I'm going to sit down, they're just, not having answers, they're wearing me out.
That's the best news I heard all day. Mrs. Chick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Deaton, I think you, certainly I remember how I voted originally on the $4 million. I was a no vote. I didn't feel it was appropriate to change the rules midstream, and I didn't think this was a good use of public dollars. But there's something that troubles me enormously with what's before us today, and that is the dollars that are owed to me, what is one of the most outstanding nonprofit organizations in the city, the Music Center, that serves people from neighborhoods throughout our city and the region, quite frankly. Could you talk a little bit about what, what was the understanding, I mean, how in heaven's name did the committee end up where the Music Center is owed money? And they, my understanding is, as a nonprofit, they have absolutely no funds or ability to reimburse themselves. So could you just address the Music Center piece, what that bill is all about, and how this ended up happening? And then, a question, is there a way to separate the items on the bill? Could I move that the amounts for the Music Center are separated out?
First off, the Music Center was, early in the process, was thought to be the, an ideal location for the major event that was being put on by the, by the city through the organizing committee for the convention. There were several things, this went on, the discussions with the Music Center went on for a long period of time. The difficulty were, was that there were events that were going on, I think as mentioned, and those events had to be changed around, and at some point, there was an agreement signed between the organizing committee and the Music Center.
So the Music Center was told they would be reimbursed for their cost?
They would be paid their cost. And the cost, not directly involved in those negotiations, but I think the cost was in part to the re, the changing of the events. In other words, it wasn't so much a charge for the facility as it was to also making changes in the theater performances for the audiences that they had season tickets for, et cetera. So there was a lot of mechanics that had to be done, and those things had to be worked out, and then they had financial...
Performances were canceled?
They were adjusted. I'm not sure exactly if they were canceled, they were adjusted. I don't think they were canceled totally, but you'd have to ask them. As I said, I wasn't involved in negotiations. So anyway, there was a commitment to pay for that, and obviously that, based on their budget and their dollars, et cetera, for some reason, wasn't paid. And what you now have before you is not only the Music Center that's in that situation, but you also have the Ginatri, the, some other venues, and also some small...
On this bill?
On some small vendors that paid, that were paid, were not paid for services and goods to support that, that event, and others. So what...
I, is there a way to separate out the bills from, I didn't realize that the Autry Museum was also part of this?
Right, you could just say for those venues...
Okay, I, I will move that the nonprofit venues, Music Center and Autry Museum, and if you're not naming any others, those are the two that I will mention, that the dollars owed those two nonprofit organizations that serve this city and its people well, that they, those bills be reimbursed, and I will support that. I will not support anything else.
Is there a second for the motion?
Against these dollars being allocated, and it's the only way that I can be a yes vote on any portion of what's before us today, it's because, I don't think it's appropriate to not pay anyone, but these bills never were intended to be paid by us, eight people voted for it. I will become a yes vote for that portion of the bill only. That's my motion.
Ms. Msakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak, but I felt that, although I appreciate the, the direction that Ms. Chick is going in, the only people that would be then left holding the bag are the proverbial very small vendors, who deserve just as much credit and a recognition. I agree that we're in a sort of a rock and a hard place. I didn't want to spend this money, I don't think it was an appropriate appropriation back when we made it last August. It was, it was not consistent with what we had done. But at this point, those who don't get paid, not only are the nonprofits who immediately rise to our visibility because of the good that they do do in the community, but those small business vendors who are also out, based on contractual obligations, based on an assumption that they would get paid, and the ones who can least afford not getting paid. It's not the major corporations and organizations that can sort of accept that money. So I too, like Ms. Goldberg, am going to vote for this today, reluctantly, not having originally wanted to cast the vote, but as much as we can start looking at the reasonableness of those who really are owed and are out of pocket, whether it's the nonprofits or those small vendors, who I dare say would be very, some of them might be put in very dire constraints or consequences, and I don't think it's fair to them. So this amount of money is sort of way after the fact, it's only the $270,000, and although that is a large amount, it's a very small portion of the $4 million. And those, to make the point of just staying consistent, those are the people who would be hurt, and I, so I too, am going to cast my vote today for it, just so that we are not hurtful of those who assumed and presumed, based on the requests from the city agents, whether it was DNC or city agents, there was an awful lot of mixing of the two, that they were being asked to provide services which they might now not get paid for after relying on the city's word. So I think that that is an unfortunate situation, but a reason why we should vote for it today.
Ms. Galanter?
Yeah, I'm not afraid to say that I voted for the original appropriation, and I did it for reasons I am still prepared to defend, but I don't think how you voted the first time is the issue today. The issue today is really, are we going to pay these people who provided services in good faith or not? And I have to tell you that over the years I've been on this council, I've had more visits from generally small businesses, frequently women and minority owned businesses, who say, you know, I really want to do business with the city, but I can't afford to do it because it takes too long to get paid. And whether or not we should be the ones who have to pay these bills is no longer the issue. Those people provided services, they cannot afford to not be paid, and they are, the message we will be sending to them, if we make sure they don't get paid, is that we don't want to do business with small businesses, and we all know that we do. So I voted for it originally, I will vote for it again, I think the convention was good for us. It will turn out not to have been good for all these businesses unless we make sure that they get paid. So I urge an aye vote, let's put this behind us and go on to something else.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, and I'm eager to do that as well. However, Mr. Deaton, if, if this bill is not paid in full, and there's money left in the account, are there other bills coming in that are not paid as well? Are there bills beyond what's before us right now?
My understanding is that this, that our $4 million, if you will, will not cover all their deficit.
So there are more bills still coming?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and do we have any, because some of the bills, and maybe Mr. Tuttle, you can clarify this, if we don't pay this bill before us, and there are bills out there waiting to come in, that fit the original instructions from council when the majority of the council voted for the $4 million, then you will pay those bills according to the criteria, is that not correct?
If there's a balance, and if they fit the criteria, yes. Though I have no information that we have any more bills coming in than that criteria. There, we did learn at the committee hearing on November 8th chaired by Mr. Padilla, that there might be some subsequent bills coming in. there might be some subsequent bills coming in. We haven't heard more detail on that since-
Because what I'm, what I'm getting at here is, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues, and it's why these discussions are sometimes very important in helping to shape positions. What I don't want to do is to vote "no" because of the small vendors, which is, is a serious problem, as my colleagues have presented, and then find out that, for instance, we've got some big corporate bills coming in that will be paid, and that we have stiffed an important nonprofit and small vendors. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could Ms. Lund from the Controller's office make a comment?
I just want to add, we haven't seen any other bills that fit our criteria. However, I'm not at all sure that there aren't more coming.
Okay, because I've heard, and there are rumors all over the place, but that there are some of the utility companies that are, that have bills that have not been reimbursed, and they're submitting those. Mr. Tuttle?
Yes, just to punctuate two points. One is, the reason this is before you today, and I walked in late when I got called to come, is because the party, the party stipulation in the original motion and so on and so forth. The other factor is there were salary, just to remind us, there, what is not being paid and no proposal to pay them, and it goes beyond the budget, are those staff people who continue to work on matters having to do with, as they put it, quote unquote, wrapping up the convention. And we were careful to point that out in committee. And the comment, the comments that were made is that the priority appears to be from the folks who want to be, the House Committee wanting to have these payments made, to be to take care of the bills before you today. But there's still, there's, someone, somewhere, is still going to have to take care of or decide not to take care of those employees of the House Committee who worked on, some of whom may still be on staff. Just be aware of that. That's going on too.
I'm, I'm trying to decide what the right thing to do is here, and part of that decision for me is based on whether this money is going to go to somebody else automatically without coming for a vote, then I can support not only the nonprofits but the small vendors versus some big corporation that's going to submit a bill. Mr. De-
I believe that's a very firm possibility, that in fact, if you don't-
Of the rumor that I just shared.
Right. And I do believe that-
Mrs. Chick?
And I do believe the right thing to do is to pay the small vendors, to pay the venues in which we have had, which the organizing committee had a contract with, to pay them for their services in order to put on the best image for Los Angeles during the period of this convention. It goes beyond the original discussion of the four million dollars. I think it's the right thing to do today.
Mr. Fuhr-
I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Fuhr, previous question. There's no objection to the previous question, so prepare the roll on item 24. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth whiff on that. Next item.
Item number 34, called Special by Councilmember Galanter.
Ms. Galanter?
Yes, I promised to be brief. I just wanted to call this to everybody's attention. This is a motion to add to the investment options in the retirement board and elsewhere, a, what's called a socially conscious mutual fund. As you know, the state purrs, the Public Employees Retirement System, has divested itself of tobacco stocks and South Africa stocks and a number of other, am I interrupting something here? Another, appears that way. Yeah. And other investments that many of us would like to have our money not support either. So all this motion does is to request that among the options available for deferred compensation and retirement funds be one that the employee has the option to choose that goes specifically into socially responsible investments. I ask for an "aye" vote.
Okay. We have item what, 20-
Thirty, thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 36, called Special by Councilmember Goldberg. I believe there's an amended motion that has been distributed.
Ms. Goldberg, 36.
Ah, yes. Mr. President, members of the council, this is a motion that deals with asking for information in its main body about the relationship between the City of Los Angeles and any of its entities and the Boy Scouts of America, including but not limited to Boy Scouts of America, Learning for Life, Sea Scouts, and so forth. And it also asks that we make sure that the Section 10.8.2 of the Administrative Code around nondiscrimination be included in all contracts. And then there's an amending motion because at the two hearings held in Personnel Committee, we did hear from the Los Angeles Police Department and the Los Angeles Police Commission, a member of the commission is here, and so this, the 36A asks us to urge the police department to continue their ongoing efforts to determine the best possible method to create a unique and independent police cadet program, to urge this council to support the police commission's motion asking that LAPD sever its relationship with the Boy Scouts and create its own independent cadet training program, and further to ask the risk management and city attorney and LAPD and the commission to resolve the one outstanding issue, which is the liability insurance now provided by Boy Scouts of America, and finally, to reaffirm the values of the principle of equality and justice by strongly opposing any method of discrimination. If we take these actions, and I need to say, if we take these actions, we will be joining, first of all, San Diego Police Department, Chicago Police Department, Santa Clara County Sheriff's, and Tempe, Arizona Police, which have already taken these actions. The LA County Sheriff's Department is already involved in a study much the same way that LAPD is, and is moving, as I understand it, from the sheriff in a very similar direction. We would be joining school boards in California, Minnesota, Massachusetts, and New York, who have taken similar actions. And there are, including the United Way, Chase Manhattan Bank, Levi Strauss, Wells Fargo, Textron Company, private sector groups, which are also trying to say to the Boy Scouts that while the Supreme Court has given you the opportunity to discriminate and consider that lawful, that our policies do not permit us any longer to be involved with you in these fashions. This would not permit Boy Scouts from using public facilities in the same way that any other organization would use a public facility, does not ban them from using parks, but it does say they will have to pay the normal and ordinary fees because fee waivers are considered sponsorship, and we are, under our own rules, not allowed to sponsor organizations which discriminate. So it is limited, but it deals with the fact that the City of Los Angeles does have a policy of nondiscrimination in these matters, and I would ask that perhaps we give Commissioner Hansel an opportunity to talk about what the police commission is doing, and I thank you and urge for an "aye" vote on both the amendment and the original motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually would like to begin by giving our friend Commissioner Hansel an opportunity to report on what actions, if any, the police commission is undertaking.
Good, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come and address this issue. It's, since the commission actually hasn't taken a position on it yet, that the comments that I make are merely my own. We have on, on our agenda for next Tuesday, a motion that I authored relative to the Boy Scouts of America, that in essence would do several things. One would, would direct the chief to meet with the chief executive of the Boy Scouts of America, the national organization, in an attempt to get the Boy Scouts to reconsider their current policy, which, which policy is that, that they will not allow in the Boy Scouts or in their cadre of, of executives called professional scout executives, people that are lesbian or gay or in the parlance of Boy Scouts avowed homosexuals. The Sheriff Baca is going to be doing likewise. Assuming that's not successful, it would then direct the department to separate from the Boy Scouts of America within 90 days. The department itself has had a long history with the Boy Scouts through, through its Explorers Program, and the goal would be to maintain that program, but do it either under the auspices of the department itself with its own program, to associate with another law enforcement agency such as the Sheriff's Department, or to affiliate with another organization that doesn't have discriminatory policies. The motion would then have the department report back to us what it does. And then finally, what it says is that at such point is that the, the Boy Scouts reconsider their misguided policies at some point in the future. If the department felt that it was appropriate at that time, they then could come back to us and request reaffiliation with the Boy Scouts of America. Contrary to what some representations that have been made, the Explorer Program is not a separate organization. It simply is a program of the Boy Scouts. It's run from Boy Scout offices. The Board of Directors of the Boy Scouts set policies for the Explorer Program. There is, in the City of Los Angeles, for example, two Boy Scout councils, a Western Region and a Los Angeles Region. Each has, has a person called the Exploring Executive, who is a full-time employee of the Boy Scouts of America. Their job application indicates that gays and lesbians unfortunately need not apply for the position. So it's, it really is just a part of the Boy Scouts itself, and that's really the reasons that have prompted this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I wanted to rise to say a couple things about this matter. First of all, the city attorney has issued a preliminary opinion that says this is not a matter of choice for the city, but that in fact, the Boy Scouts policy is at odds with city law. Is that correct, Mr. Orozco?
Yes, it is.
So, you know, much of this debate has been characterized as though there were options for the city, but the city attorney has opined, has it not, that there are no options, that unless the Boy Scouts change their policy, this policy is inconsistent with city law, and the only choice before the council is whether it wants to enforce existing city law or not. Is that correct?
In terms of contracting, that is correct.
So I, I wanted to spell that out at the inception of this, or certainly following the comments that have already been made. I, I have to say that I think we all recognize the value in a program like Explorer Scouts. And Commissioner Hansel, one thing I would ask of you that was asked of us in committee is, as the commission moves forward and does what it will, that there is an assurance that those kids who are in the existing programs don't suffer a discontinuity between this program and the subsequent one, that there's a seamless transition from one set of programs to the other, so that these kids, who are really trying their best to be role models among their peers and ideally will become police officers themselves, don't end up bearing the brunt of the failure of the Boy Scout leadership to adopt an anti-discrimination policy. So Dean, what do you think about that?
I think, I agree with you on it. I know that the department has, members of the staff on it have been looking at that issue right now. There's a lot of commitment within the department to a, a program that really focuses in on youth for two reasons. One is because of the fact that it's just, it helps teach a lot of the, the values that people in the department hold strongly, and also as, as a recruitment device.
Yeah, although Dean, what I want to be clear about is, I'm talking about assuring that the kids who are currently enrolled aren't left high and dry during the pendency of another program, that we allow there to be a smooth transition for these kids. And finally, you know, on the reasons to do this, we don't have a choice legally. Why don't we have a choice legally? Because both the spirit and the content of existing city law is very clear. The city shouldn't participate in a discriminatory practice or policy. That's all that there is to it. We shouldn't do so when someone violates our policies on the basis of race, or on the basis of gender, or on the basis of religion, or ethnicity. And nobody, including the Boy Scouts, with whom, with this leadership, I've had a conversation myself, has articulated what the difference is between discriminating on the basis of race on the one hand, which they would agree ought never happen, and discriminating on the basis of sexual orientation on the other hand. There's no difference that they could articulate, and there's no difference that was articulated by the city attorney a moment ago. That's what our charge needs to be, to adopt, to enforce the law that's on the books.
Next item. If not, prepare the roll.
Item number 36, as amended.
As amended. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 37, called Special by Councilmember Galanter.
Ms. Galanter, did you call 37, or was it Laura Chick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I wanted to draw our attention to my motion of 37. We, it's very clear, unfortunately, that we are going to be facing, and the public we serve is going to be facing increases in energy prices, especially natural gas. And what my motion asks for is for the Department of Water and Power working with the gas company to come back to the council with a report on what these potential increases are. We need to inform the public and prepare residents and businesses when they may occur, but most importantly, colleagues, how we can reduce natural gas use and lessen the impacts on the bills of our constituents. No one ever likes to face these increases, but if they're inevitable, we need to understand why and what we can do about it. So I look forward to getting this report back from DWP. Thank you.
Next item, 37. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 38, called Special by Councilmember Holden.
Well, we, we have a card on David, David Codman.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. David Cochran from Assam, Council 36, representing Assam locals 164, 585, 1890, and 2204, the basic professional management and supervisory bargaining units of the Community Redevelopment Agency. I'm here today on this item, which is, is simply to direct the CRA administrator to appear at the H and CR Committee and explain why he is hiring private investigators, to inform you of the fear and outrage that this action has caused the employees of the agency. We've gone to a virtual police state over there. This investigation, and I would recommend that the council direct the administrator to bring forward the paperwork and billings on this item. This investigation did not start with relation to the Hollywood parking lot. This started back last fall, over a year ago. And virtually as soon as this administrator came into office, he started some kind of blind wholesale investigations on agency employees based, at least on what, at least what I'm reading in the paper, on rumor, innuendo, and hearsay from, from other employees. That's not the way to run a railroad. It's frightening in the least that a new agency administrator could come in and have the discretion to have the kind of private investigative powers over employees that include such things as photographic surveillance of employees during their off-hours. And the reason that we know about this is that we've seen some of the billings, and those billings include receipts for development of film. Tells us that, that they've gone so far as, as at least possibly to be photographing employees during their off-hours. That's wrong. That's not what this government is about. That's not what this city's about. Would ask the council to take a very close look at what's been going on with these investigations of CRA employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holden, you call as special?
I want to speak first.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to support the motion, and in light of today's revelations, it might be appropriate for the controller to help us understand as best as he can what is going on, what practices have been followed, what procedures- as best as he can what is going on, what practices have been followed, what procedures, policies, protocols are warranted, in the event that it is deemed appropriate to consider the contracting of services with a private investigator. As best as I've been able to determine, and some of this comes from conversations with the Controller's office, this is a most unusual procedure or pursuit. And if in fact, this was done without the appropriate approvals, or if there are no approvals in place in terms of a process, it strikes me as being very, very problematic. What are the issues? Obviously, those of us who concern ourselves, and I suspect that would be everyone around this horseshoe with matters of civil liberties, we should be clear that there are no problems in that connection. For those who have concerns about privacy rights, the same is the case. Now, these concerns are effectively obviated if in fact, there's a process that's delineated and that process was followed. But when we have those issues before us, it seems to me that we cannot remain silent in the face of this. So, Mr. President, members of the council, it would seem to me some guidance, some input, some information is due of the council in this connection, only to be reinforced by yet another banner story in the newspaper today that does in fact, point to irregularities, alleged irregularities. If such is the case, then the question that I would simply want to raise is, oughtn't there be an appropriate standardized way to deal with alleged wrongdoing? Otherwise, we begin to mimic some other problems that we have in another department in the city that has cost us a huge amount of money. Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Councilman. I think probably the answer to this set of questions from the council members is to basically tell a bit of a narrative as to the developments as we see them. A party not at the table, I notice, is the head of the department, the head of CRA. But we're here, I think, to try to create a kind of narrative of a set of developments, and also perhaps our sense of the protocols that one would expect to be used in terms of some of these questions. It's my impression, though I'd be certainly willing to do it, that it's not the purpose of the council today to get into a detailed discussion of the report which we released, though if in fact, the conversation moves that way, I'll leave it to the chair to decide whether we engage those issues or not. Mr. Chairman, let me turn now to Jim Armstrong, who most of you know is the, our chief auditor, and has been now for a good many years, to deal with some aspects of the question which the councilmen raised. And Jim, you might want to begin with first, and I think where the councilman was headed initially, is first, some sense of how we operate, what are our standards when we come upon items which we think call out for special steps to be taken along these lines? And second...
Did you approve the investigation? Did your officers approve the investigation? It's a question that we've had as well.
Yeah, let me, we'll go into that. Then I think, second is, another feature of this is the narrative, which will get to the issues of how an investigator, at least our sense of the issue of how the investigative team happened to be chosen. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, Mr. Armstrong.
Mr. President, with your permission.
Mr. President, we were contacted by the Administrator of CRA earlier this year, much earlier this year, I believe it goes back as far as February, wherein they brought us in and briefed myself and one of our staff on the results of an investigation that they had conducted. Our recommendation at the time was that what we would normally do in our shop is if any time we run across a question like that, we would refer to typically one of two sources, the Los Angeles Police Department, normally Bunko forgery, or the District Attorney's Office, the Major Fraud Investigation Group. We recommended that they handle it that way and take it to appropriate law enforcement, since they had done the investigation. We were not part of it. We were not part of initiating the investigation. We were essentially at the end of that process. Some months later, we did sit down again with the Administrator of the CRA, and he requested that we audit a couple of different areas in the agency, and we agreed to do that. We hired an outside firm. Only after we had hired the firm and agreed to do the audit, did we get a copy of the investigative report, which we provided to the auditors, so that they would have a complete picture going in of areas they may want to review in terms of controls and specific transactions. The result of that process is what was released this week.
And then also on the issue of him choosing the auditor and the city attorney.
Mr. Tuttle was asking me to, our knowledge about the selection of the investigative firm, at least as it was related to me by the Administrator of CRA, was that he contacted the city attorney's office for a recommendation. City Attorney's Office reportedly had a number of investigative firms under contract that they used on a regular basis. I believe it was represented that they gave the name of one or two firms to the Administrator who in turn contracted with them. The process of hiring the auditors, we used one of the firms, we went through an interview of a couple of firms down there, and we used one of the firms that CRA has under contract, so CRA essentially paid for the audit, and we directed the work that was done.
Yeah, that, I want to emphasize, the audit itself was one which was under our direction, the audit that you received in your office. While we contracted with a firm, that audit was under the direction of the city Controller's office. There were appropriate exit discussions and discussions with CRA personnel as we went along. That was handled in that fashion. And Mr. Armstrong's representation of the sequence of events happens to fit my own memory, which is not as perfect as his, but that's congruent, Mr. President, members of the council, council member, with our sense of the way in which things developed.
Okay, then we'll go, we'll start on a debate we have. Mr. Holden, next.
Mr. President, members, I think it's appropriate to discuss Special 1. At the time, we have this matter before us. Mr. Thomas is properly moving, seconding Special 1, and I think it's to be, if it's proper with the body, Mr. President, that we should couple it with the discussion that we're having now. And I'll wait for your action before I begin to speak, and you can hold my time, while you decide what you're going to do with Special 1 in terms of incorporating in this discussion.
...before us right now.
I know, but it's the same as 31, is what I'm saying, Mr. President. It's timely.
Well, Special 1, we'll probably discuss that a little bit.
All right, Mr. President. Well, on this subject matter, I think that we should, we should, again, have this matter that's been requested by the motion to go to Community Redevelopment Committee and report back to the council. But they should have the Administrator of CRA and also the Controller. If you need it to be done in secrecy, fine, behind closed doors, we have no problem with that. But all of the detailed information which you have in your possession, Mr. Tuttle, you should bring to the committee and share it with the body. I think that the council should be entitled to that. Do you have a copy of that report of the investigation, Mr. Tuttle?
I do.
Is there any reason why we can't have a copy of that report?
These matters, we will have to have the approval of the city attorney.
Well, between now and the time that it comes to the...
And, excuse me, excuse me, Councilman, I should supplement this answer as well. I was reminded of something else. And I'm going to let Mr. Armstrong, with your permission, add slightly to this answer.
Okay, well, my time is up, if you can...
And that is, Mr. Chairman, that is, this matter has now been referred to the District Attorney.
That's what I'm talking about.
And Jim, do you want to add a word on this?
Yeah, I mean, you have to hold my time, Mr. President, please. Okay, go ahead.
Jim, go ahead.
I was just going to add that our professional standards say that once we've referred a matter to an investigative agency that is essentially out of our hands, as long as we believe, or have reason to believe, there's an ongoing investigation, only with their approval would we then have the ability to release something that may be part of an investigative, an ongoing investigation.
And it's confidential. And it's confidential.
No, my time, and on that subject. We deal with litigation all the time, behind closed doors. We go and discuss these matters, closed session. And I don't see any reason why this case is any different than the others that we deal with, and that this matter should be brought to the committee in closed session, and then to the full council in closed session, so we know where we stand. There could be some liability associated with the action that the Administrator took at CRA. Yes, Mr. Tuttle?
Mr. President, let me cut to the chase in terms of my response to the member of the council. I will authorize the release of this report without the approval of the city attorney, and now the district attorney. The district attorney for reasons which Mr. Armstrong just mentioned, the city attorney also because of, among other things, our discussions with the city attorney. So, it's possible, Mr. Holden, you could invite that process if you liked, but I'm not going to release it on my own. Just not going to do it.
Well, how can you just share the information with the committee if you, behind closed doors?
And that would be a, and, thank you, that comes right back to the point. Excuse my back. That would be a difficulty, because that particular report, we will not release without the approval of the city attorney.
Oh, we'll get to it.
And without, and, now that we refer this to the district attorney, and without the approval of the district attorney, per the comment Mr. Armstrong made about the auditing standards, and also about the practices of that agency. Now, if those can be worked out, that may be another matter, but that's where we are on that.
I just want to make sure that...
By the way, one other thing, this is essentially a work product, that while we have it, this particular work product of which I speak, is not the work, we read the work product, and it was important for me to read it, and for others to read it as well, and had some influence along with the audit itself on the decision to refer to the district attorney of this matter. But I also want to add, this particular work product is not the work product of the Controller's office or under our control. But in terms of our releasing it, we would need the approval of the city attorney and the approval of the district attorney.
Right, we'll work that out. We don't know, you may not need approval of both, because we don't have the approval of the district attorney when we discuss those cases associated with Rampart here in closed session, Mr. Tuttle. So I think that we can work that out, and the city, with the city attorney's concurrence, and that will be requested at the next meeting, and it should happen, I would hope.
We can look into it further. There are certain areas of discussion where I don't want to go in this public discussion today.
It won't be public, it won't be public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, maybe even in that area.
Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we started this with absolutely the right question asked by Mr. Ridley Thomas. The problem is, I think it may have been asked to the wrong authority. While we both do need CRA here, but more than that, I think we need the city attorney here, because as I understand, as Mr. Tuttle indicated, he received a report after it was done, conveyed information, I think Mr. Armstrong conveyed information, that he understood that the Administrator before he had started had actually talked to the city attorney, got consultation and advice. And whether in closed session or not, we need to know what that advice was, and whether or not the CRA proceeded consistent with that. But we don't know that information. I'm a little concerned that we're having this debate today when the motion basically says, "Go and have this full exposure in a committee hearing as soon as possible, and then bring it back." There's clearly, in addition to this motion, we then have today the report somewhat related to the motion but different, which is the Controller's report of the audit. It's not technically on the agenda today, but it clearly informs the information that was initiated by the CRA. And we have that, had we not read the report, available to read to this morning as we open our morning newspapers. Members of the council, we had a new Administrator come in, maybe about 15 months ago, that new Administrator was told that there were problems with the agency, and he was charged with looking at it, investigating it, and bringing up some answers and some major reform. We are now clearly headed in that direction. We had a matter before, it's just last, a week or two ago, which also raised that question and reaffirmed the council's concern about experiences in the past, patterns in the past, and things that needed to be changed. I look forward very much to having this hearing in the committee. I would just like to amend the motion to say that not only should the Director of Community Redevelopment Agency be requested to appear, but that the city attorney who advised, and if the Controller is willing, to be there as well, so that we have all three there, and then that committee comes forward with a recommendation as quickly as possible to council, so council itself can hear this information, both that that we can in public, and if necessary, that that we need to hear if we need to go there in executive session. But members of the council, we clearly have more than enough information before us to say that there are issues of a serious nature, issues that we need to take appropriate steps in whatever levels are necessary, and we need to do it quickly. So I really move, just to say, the amendment to the motion that the city attorney and Controller be part of that hearing, and also part of the council when it comes back, and that we move quickly to adopt this and find out all that we need to know, all that we can make known to the public, and that that needs to go on its other course, if necessary, go forward prudently and expeditiously.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, first of all, I want to take full responsibility for not having Mr. Sharlin here, because when I read the motion, I took the motion on its face, on its word, that this was supposed to be heard in committee, and no one contacted me as the chair of that committee that there was going to be something different done today. So I'm kind of surprised at this sort of tactic of debating this issue here today and bringing in the Controller, when the direction and the anticipation of the motion was that this would be done in committee. So I really don't think it's good form to tell everyone, especially those who follow the agenda, that you're going to do something in committee, and then spring it on them on the council. Second thing, Mr. Tuttle, on your report, I would like some dates on these transactions, because they're not, there are none attached to it, because reading between the lines, it looks like all of these transactions occurred with the prior Administrator and the prior administration, and I know that many of those individuals have been either terminated or somehow reassigned to get them out of the process because of the problems that you've identified. And I think that, at this point, because we're going to be entering personnel issues, I believe your comments are accurate, not so much in terms of the criminal aspects, because those are also accurate, but the fact that we're going to be talking about people's job performance as they did these transactions, that this is something that's going to be in executive session, in committee, when it comes up, because of the fact that it's a personnel matter. I only ask that we approve the motion as amended, that it go to committee, that we have a full hearing in committee, that way we can get a report to the full council. I believe that was the intent of the maker of the motion. I'm surprised at the change of tactics without informing me as chair of the committee, because I would have been more than willing to facilitate a more in-depth, or at least a more informed discussion today. But doing it piecemeal really doesn't serve our purpose here, and I would recommend that we approve the motion as amended to include these other individuals who are important to our discussion.
And we'll get those dates.
Hernandez?
Members of the council, this seems to be a very serious issue, and I'm a little confused, because there's an audit draft, or an audit, that you can't share with the council right now, is that correct?
The audit is out and is shared with the council.
So we have that.
You have, you have, sir, you have the audit. The, there is the, I'm going to use the term investigator's report, which was commissioned by the head of the CRA.
Right, and that investigator's report cannot be shared.
That's correct. And with which we, which we looked at, and which was either at the final stage or near the final stage when we saw it. And that's the one which is confidential, and which we discussed before, which we...
Okay, now, because, you know, the LA Times has an article that we all read. The LA Times article basically says that Tuttle asked the District Attorney's Office to investigate, citing the audit's findings and the private investigator's report, that it suggests questionable or unlawful activity.
That's right.
However, the same article states that Tuttle said, "The audit did not find evidence that any specific CRA employee benefited financially from the agency's transactions."
That's also correct.
So, my assumption is then the investigative report is what drew you to those conclusions.
It's the, may I speak...
I just, I'm reading from a newspaper article, and they're quoting you directly.
That's a fair assumption. As a reader of the article, Councilman Hernandez, members of the...
As a reader of the article, Councilman Hernandez, members of the council, Mr. President, the thought process, the decision-making process I had in terms of the matter of referral was, A, having read the investigative report, as had my staff, also having this audit, which we released to council and to the public over the last day or so, which indicated that the control environment and the areas of acquisition and other areas which we looked were very, was very weak, and where there were very questionable practices which had taken place. And looking at all these together, looking at the two together, was enough to prompt me to do something which is unusual on my watch.
Right, right, right.
Which is to make a referral to the district attorney's office.
Okay, so then that referral was made directly from the controller's office to, based on those two reports. I just want to-
That's correct, and I'm glad you raised, I'm glad you clarified that, that is correct.
Now, the last question is, the property, on the Little Tokyo site, what property is that, 252 South San Pedro?
Excuse me, may I add one other point?
Yeah.
I think in our letter to you and other members of the council, we referred to referral to law enforcement. We can today be more, and yesterday be more specific, it's to the district attorney's office.
And, but do you know what property, can someone describe the Little Tokyo property to me?
Hold on a second. We'll have, we'll have to get back to you on that, or go to the committee.
It's not the one we're dealing with right now for purposes of mocha?
We, just no comment on that at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Councilman?
Mr. President.
If you want to follow up with us on that, we can-
Mr. President, I should say that some of the things that the controller and his own professional judgment has chosen not to disclose may directly impact on decisions that we have made in the immediate past, we are currently considering, or prospective decisions that we will make. I don't know how we can remain in the blind and run the risk of further compounding any problems without guidance from the appropriate entity, presumably in this instance, the controller's office. It would seem to me that there's a lot more that has to be clarified, not the least of which is the matter of the appropriate processes followed, the question of authority being granted to engage in this. The fact that you make the point that this is an exceptional circumstance such that you chose to make a referral to the district attorney's office. Other general managers in the city have made it clear that the practice of private investigators is something in their years of service they haven't chosen to do. And I'm sure that there has to be some way that we can establish clarity in this regard, and I make such a request at this point, from the controller's office, from the city attorney's office, who apparently did, the city attorney's office that is, approve the, or in some way facilitated, I will say, the investigation going forward. As to the concern about change in discussion today, prior to this point, we didn't have the information that we now have. Yesterday came a controller's report. So it seems to me it's fully appropriate for the governing body of the city to have such a discussion. I do not consider this a parochial matter, a territorial matter, this is a matter for the entire body. And I would say, rather than having it in committee, it probably ought to be in the full closed session, if Mr. Pacheco chooses to guide that discussion and set forth some parameters based on information that he may have as chair of the committee that others may not have. That's fully appropriate from my point of view, but I think to the extent that all of us, in one way or another, may be touched by the decisions that have been made, and if I understand the controller's report correctly, questioning the amount of money that has been allocated. Now, we've been talking about that, which we discussed last week or a couple of weeks ago, but additional, I don't know when it becomes clear to everyone that somehow we have to call a halt to what is going on here and take responsibility to correct it. And I think there are several things that need to be done in that connection. A disclosure, so that the council is fully apprised of what is and or is not going on, so that it doesn't further compound the problems that may be facing us in terms of future decisions. So I have a very strong sense that we have an obligation and we ought to get to that task with some urgency.
It is a motion to bring it to council. Mr. President, it's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I think it's perfectly understandable, fitting and proper for there to be discussions on the protocols and the tactics of the report of which we spoke, the investigator's report, and whether or not it should be made public and so on. There is however, another point, and I think the councilman closed on this point, and I think it's useful to keep in mind, and that is, there are factors before you on the public record in this audit which are very serious in relationship to this audit, and I draw your attention to what I think is one of the dispositive paragraphs, which is on page two, down near the bottom, which is, "The lack of disclosure results in misrepresentations by CRA staff of property acquisition information, as noted above. To the CRA board and city council, we believe that if the appraised amounts had been disclosed to the board and council, certain property transactions may not have been approved, or further negotiations might have taken place resulting in a potentially lower price." Let me add the fact that sometimes we are going to have a situation where the acquisition price is above the appraised value. All the more importance for there to be disclosure all the way along to the public bodies and on the public record, so that it's possible then for any person of the city, any resident of the city, any yeoman or yeowoman, good and true, to be able to come forward and find that record, either as an auditor, or a press person, or a council staff member and so on, be able to document that transaction. Otherwise, we're in a never, never land of the expenditure of thousands and thousands of dollars of public money, and it's very important not to lose sight of that and some of the other factors which are called out in this audit.
Did you ever think of running for president, Rick?
I could go on a bit more.
Mr. Pacheco.
On second, Paul.
Brevity. That'll be the day around here. Mr. President and colleagues, I believe my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, has really cut to the chase in that we all want to be informed, we all want to understand what is occurring at CRA, and the information that Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Sharlin have been working on is very disturbing to all of us in terms of what is not being disclosed when we do these transactions. I believe that the motion to have it in full council, and I understand, I mean, we should all understand that this is something that's so sensitive in terms of personnel matters that it is going to be in executive session, so that we don't, I'm just sharing that for the public consumption, that they understand that this is not something that's going to be necessarily a open session because of the sensitive issues that people may be prejudged before the complete investigations are in by the district attorney's office, city attorney's office, and any other law enforcement agency. So we have to be sensitive to that also. I would simply also take Mr. Ridley Thomas's suggestion that at that given time, that as chair of the committee, I'd be given the opportunity to work through these issues, and simply request that from the president at this point. But I believe Mr. Ridley Thomas has a good motion to bring this back to the council, full council review at this point, and let's get to the heart of the matter as soon as possible.
Mr. Hernandez?
Members of the council, I just want to make sure that we have a full picture, and I'm kind of proceeding cautiously here, because I think if there's any wrongdoing, it should be looked at, it should be pursued. At the same time, when you're dealing with land acquisition, we deal with a lot of it in closed session, because we have no choice. We keep on purchasing a good part of District 11 because of landslides and liabilities, and we have to sit down and negotiate with the property owner damages. When you're trying to buy commercial property, you're dealing with issues of business loss, you're dealing with issues of goodwill. We as a council don't like to use eminent domain, and you set property values, but you don't want to disclose what you bought one parcel for, because then that could become the standard, which you buy all parcels for. I'm sitting here looking at us trying to purchase land for libraries throughout my district, and the minute that a property owner knows that the city wants to purchase it, for some reason now they're going to build apartment buildings on a vacant lot, and the city's process takes so long that we end up in a catch-22 many times. And we have to make the decision, are we going to use eminent domain power, are we not going to use eminent domain power, and what's that going to cost us versus what we can buy it for, and so forth. And I believe there has to be disclosure, but at the same time, I know when you're negotiating and you're going through transactions, you might be buying one parcel out of eight that you have to buy. And where I'm confused, and the reason I was asking is, because when you look at them individually, you might have one picture, when you look at the overall process. I'm dealing with a parcel that is landlocked, basically it's a sliver, it serves no good, but it's owned by Edison, and Edison says, "Take us to court, we will go through eminent domain proceedings with you, we have attorneys, you have attorneys, what's it going to cost us?" And so that's where those kinds of negotiations are crucial, and I think that there should be a disclosure point, there should be an understanding. I just don't want to misrepresent to the public that we're just giving away money, because part of my frustration has been the amount of time it takes the city to acquire land, and what happens in that time.
And all the more reason that there be what we call in our business a clear audit trail, all the more reason that the policymakers be, you know, policymakers be given, given that information in ways that are appropriate for public bodies that are about the business of spending public taxpayers' money or tax increment monies and so on. And as I said, I said it before, I'll briefly say it again, there are times in these transactions where I'm perfectly aware of the fact, I think as most people are who've been around anything of any complexity at all in these real estate transactions, where you're going to have sometimes a higher acquisition price than an assessed valuation price, or even a combination of assessed valuations, but all the more importance in terms of the maintaining of the public trust for there to be a clear trail, not only that in the near term someone can come back, but in the intermediate and long term, people can come back and look at, and then go back through the decision-making process that Councilman X or Councilman Y or Councilmember, or Councilwoman Z went through, in terms of recommendations that the body went through and the board went through of CRA.
We have item 38 before us. Prepare the roll. Are we going to continue until the 13th? Are we going to continue this until the 13th?
What was in there? I'm sorry. Have it come back to you. Right, right, until the 13th. Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no, the 13th. Next item?
Item number 39, called Special by Councilmember Hernandez.
We have a couple, a couple cards here. We have Jerry Newman, and we have Madalena Janis Aparicio. I'll preach y'all.
You were on track, didn't you, Senator?
No, I did this. Get this over. Madalena, you go ahead.
Jerry was just here. Madalena Janis Aparicio, and I'm happy to say that we've essentially reached agreement with the mayor's office and all interested parties on the language on this, basically motion 39 and the amending motion 39A. But, so two very brief points. We believe that the living wage ordinance and the worker retention ordinance does, do and should apply to the Genesis projects, and apparently now we've, we have some agreement on that. On September 18th, the mayor's office submitted a memo to the city council regarding the six Genesis projects that are coming up for approval, and that we're moving very quickly through the council. And that memo did not mention anything about living wage or worker retention, which was a concern for us. In 1998, as some of you may recall, the council amended the ordinance to apply the ordinance to federal funds that come through the council. And in the past two years, all the major projects, the major economic development projects, such as the Trisicon project, the Cinerama Dome, Staples, Valley Plaza, they've all had some form of living wage conditions. Now, the current living wage ordinance, and basically what this motion would do is just clarify, the current living wage ordinance, which only applies to developers and subcontractors, would apply to the Genesis projects to the extent that the ordinance requires it. So this isn't anything new, this just clarifies what already exists, makes sure that we're all on the same page. We think that the CRA is now considering an ordinance that would cover tenants on the project, we think that's a very important discussion for the city to have, that's not the discussion today. And then the second point, very quickly, we think that the major projects like these with the proposed $40 million public investment need to have full disclosure and full public discussion, and so that's 39A. You need to know, and we need to know frankly, how many jobs are being created, how many part-time, how many full-time, what are the economic impacts prior to the council approval. And so that's essentially what 39A would do, is just simply assure, ensure that you all and the public has that information prior to the final approval. So we urge and I vote on both of those.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Fear?
I'd like to talk to him.
Oh, is he here? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. President, Councilmembers Jerry Newman, working with Genesis LA on this matter. Thank you for the consideration. We have reached an accord in terms of this motion, and we think it is the right and fair motion. Genesis LA was always under the impression that the application, felt very clear about how the application of the ordinance would be to the Genesis projects, in that the developers who were receiving direct recipients of city funds would be responsible for bearing the responsibility of ensuring a living wage is paid to the people that work for it and its subcontractors. So we think this clarification is a good thing. Also, with regard to the CRA portion of it, we do believe that as that policy becomes, comes forward, it is important that that policy be applied to this motion, I mean, be applied to the Genesis projects, primarily because the Genesis projects are redevelopment projects in a very real sense. Some of them are outside the redevelopment area, but in terms of how they function, they function much like redevelopment projects as opposed to city contracts, so therefore it's much more akin to what the CRA will be doing in their deliberations, and we think that should apply to Genesis projects as well. In terms of the information flow, we agree that the city should have all the information that it needs as it, as projects come forward for their approval. Some of the concern was that the projects were not ripe or did not have all the information, and we did not want to be stuck with the timeframe until those projects came forward, and we think 39A does that. So we are in support of the motions as presented, and we thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Fear?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in strong support of 39 as amended. We've already heard discussion about the importance of 39 itself, assuring that the living wage and worker retention ordinances apply, and I get Mr. Hernandez's amending motion, 39B is the further clarifying motion. With regard to 39A, I also support 39A strongly, and I have to tell you, colleagues, that the reason I'm so strongly supportive of 39A, it was Ms. Goldberg's motion, I didn't second it, is very clear. I was briefed by the business team on Genesis in the summertime. From the summer briefing to now, through emails, requests from my staff, and personal requests from me, many such requests, for precisely the information contained in the first three items here, all we've gotten is a stone wall. And I'm one of those people to vote on this stuff. Now, I don't know what the game is. Is the game to delay, delay, delay until the last minute when it looks as though there's no choice but to approve the projects? Well, that game can't be played here, and that's why I'm a supporter of 39A. I've asked for the names of these developers for some very clear reasons. We know that developers in this city either follow through on their obligations or don't, and we've all worked with parties who have been in both camps, need to know that developers are going to actually follow through on their commitments. We also need to know what the nature of these jobs truly is. Are we creating jobs with a future, jobs on which people can support their families, jobs with benefits, or not? Because jobs that simply pay minimum wage and nothing more, well, those jobs are out there. Jobs that offer people a training ladder and a future and benefits and good wages, that's another thing again. And when it comes to our precious dollars, we'd be darn sure that we're allocating them to projects that offer some hope to the people who are involved in being employed there, as well as in the communities in which they're being- as well as in the communities in which they're being situated. Obviously, development in the neighborhoods in which Genesis projects are proposed is crucially important. Too many neighborhoods in our city have been left behind in this economic recovery that other people have benefited so much from. That ought to be what the city is about. But the city ought to be also about a process that is open and transparent, not a process in which elected officials are denied access to basic information with little more to say than, "You'll get it in two more weeks."
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I stand obviously in support of the living wage as I have worked on and dealt with on different issues, but I have some concerns here. And the primary concern that I have is what problem are we trying to solve if I've been told that the law is already in place, that the projects that receive funding, federal funding beyond a million dollars would comply with the living wage? And I have a letter here from the city attorney's office dated November 9th that says, "Recently, questions have arisen concerning whether or not the worker retention ordinance and living wage apply to the efforts of Genesis LA. No one has disclosed to me who raised these questions." Where are we going with this in terms of this whole issue? Because I seem like, it seems like we're rushing into have a solution, but no one's defined the problem. Because if the problem is lack of enforcement of our own laws, I don't know what we're doing here because we're not rewriting the laws. We're just sort of talking to each other. And I'm not sure if this is just some public posturing to get the mayor's office to move and enforce the law if that's the charge, that they're not following the law, or if it's something else. And then what I'm concerned about is I don't know what the something else is. And it's just sort of out there and it's sort of swimming around here, but it's not clear to me how this all got started. What problem are we trying to solve? I don't see the problem if the law is already in place. If it's lack of enforcement, then maybe the charge should be a little clearer and just direct the mayor's office or instruct the mayor's office or somehow reprimand the mayor's office if it's lack of enforcement. But I see a lot of different motions. I see amending motions. I just want to know what's going on. I don't get a clear picture as to what's going on. If it's simply, we need to direct the mayor's office and that's what we should do and not jump around. I mean, now we're talking about the CRA and I would ask that they go to committee if we're going to talk about the CRA. I just, I want to know what we're doing here. It just seems premature and kind of hastily moving along. And I simply just want to understand what I'm voting on before I vote on it. So if someone can just tell me what problem we're trying to solve, I'd appreciate it. And that way I can decide what we're doing. Because I don't know who started the ball rolling and the city attorney's letter. And as far as I remember, the city attorney does not set policy in the city of Los Angeles. So I find it awkward that we're responding to a city attorney letter that's dated November 9th. And if I have the sequence of events out of order, someone can correct me on the sequence of events.
Well, as the author of the main motion, let me tell you, Mr. Pacheco, how I got involved in this. It came to my attention through some of the community-based organizations that follow these things, that there was a serious question being raised as to whether or not living wage and worker retention were covering the Genesis projects. They had asked questions and had gotten mixed answers. Some people saying yes, some people saying no. So I thought that we should clarify it and that's why we have the motion. Now, we have had some discussions with the mayor's office and with Genesis. And we have these two amendments to try to move forward today and put this controversy to rest because everybody agrees now. I'm happy to report that. That doesn't always happen, but we're all in agreement at this point. On 39A, however, there's been a request that, from the mayor's office, and I will add that we would like to change a couple of lines in the moving part of the motion. So let me read it to you as it will stand. I will move that it says, "I therefore move that the city council requests the mayor's office to submit in writing a more detailed report within 30 days prior to the approval of funding for each project." And then it goes and lists the things. In other words, we want to have the information before the funding is approved because of some of the reasons mentioned by Mr. Fuer, which is, we need to know who these developers are by name, not just a corporation, but who are the people that are involved? What are the projects, numbers of full and part-time people and so forth and so on? The second item, 39B, which I seconded it, also at the request of the mayor's office is that we add the following line. And it is not in the moving part, but it will clarify the intent. So after the words, "application of both," in order to clarify the intent of the council relative to the application of both the city's living wage ordinance, service contract or worker retention to the Genesis LA Economic Corporation projects, we will specify that the city's living wage ordinance currently only covers employees, employers rather, and subcontractors, but not tenants. Now, I of course would prefer that it covered tenants, but it doesn't and so my wishes don't help that. But I will move that we add that language to it. Clarifies the clarification. Developers, subcontractors, but not tenants. So that would be my motion that we change 39A and B. And that reflects now discussions with the makers of both of the amendments, the Genesis organization and the mayor's office. And I would urge that we adopt 39, 39A and 39B as now currently constituted.
Ms. Goldberg, before, depending on your time, what about the time within which it comes back?
30 days.
So before the projects come back?
Yes. Prior to the, 39A, let me just finish. Prior to that, it says, "Prior to the approval of funding for each project."
Yeah, that'll be separate votes though. Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, as a person who called it special, I'd like to also reserve the right to speak more than three minutes. I might go six.
I'll watch you.
I wanted to note, and I say this, I need Mr. Fuer to understand, when I argue that you have 43 commissioners out of council district five and I have 13, your district is well represented in policymaking. My district is continuing to ask for more representation. And I tend to have to be a voice for issues that other communities don't understand. How many Genesis projects are in your district when you compare it to how many are in mine? And I have two. The reason they are called Genesis projects is I don't have developers dying to come and develop my vacant blank land. And then people come in and try and tell the community that's there what should happen. And that's subjective sometimes. You see, I came onto this council trying to figure out why I could not get a McDonald's in my district. And now I can go to a McDonald's in my district and ask the young people working there, the 70 people who were hired there where they live, and find out that they live in that neighborhood. And these are teenagers who didn't have those job opportunities. Now, in other communities, they don't want McDonald's. But you need to understand what it's like to represent a community that did not have a McDonald's and did not have that kind of a job opportunity for that community. And I've been able to convince that McDonald's not to be a corporate store, but to allow that the owner be the ex-football coach of Cathedral High School. And he is hiring kids from his neighborhoods. And he wants kids to become McDonald's franchise owners. And those are important concepts. And then I see a Home Depot open and that McDonald's has a "For Hire" sign because their business went up 70%. But that Home Depot had 70% of its employees come from a three-mile radius. Now, other communities might not want a Home Depot, but to be honest with you, in my neighborhoods, everybody has building supplies, materials in their backyards because they act as subcontractors at small firms trying to do business. Now, we're talking about revitalizing communities here. And it's not like everybody's knocking on our door and wants to do it on their own. Now, I need to share with you something that happened on Sixth and Chateau. Because there is a Home Depot going in there. There is a Food for Less going in there. There is a Rite Aid. There is a McDonald's. There is a Trac Auto Parts in a part of Westlake that people thought would never happen. But when I talked to those developers and they wanted city subsidies, I said, "It comes with a living wage ordinance. It comes with a worker retention ordinance. It comes with you complying with city requirements." And they said, "We don't need it." I said, "Thank you. Then I can use it for other projects." And they basically are still doing their project without it. Now, that kind of activity is beginning to happen in my communities. But there are still those parcels that I need all the tools I can use. And I just want you to be aware that when we deal with any tax increment financing project, not just Genesis LA projects, we're asking the same questions about worker retention and the living wage ordinance. Now, it hasn't been defined that way when we talk about Genesis LA overall. Okay? And that's why I think the clarity of the motions that came before us today. But see, there will be projects that will get some assistance from Genesis LA and it might be some of the environmental work that won't basically be part of the overall development project. And that comes from the private sector in-kind donation. And I met some of those people at the Sears site. I really appreciate Ms. Goldberg trying to continue to bring these issues to our attention because they're important. But I want you as a whole to understand that as a city, we're not at the same level in all communities. And we have to continue to work to reach that equity. And that's why we have to look at different approaches. I wish everybody was knocking to do work and provide jobs and increase the quality of life on my doors. And that's just not the case. And I have to provide incentives in some cases. The other point I need to make to all of us is when we talk about these subsidized tax increment financed projects, they're not happening overnight. As the chair of the Community Economic Development Committee, I can tell you that project after project comes before us. But one of the reasons we had the timeliness report in regards to the block rent monies, the monies that were not moving fast enough tend to be the monies that we're holding for economic development. And it's because it's a commitment on the city's part to invest in that property, but we still have to wait for the rest of the project to come together. But normally, when we are allocating that funding, there's a full report that comes to the committee. And it's happened time and time again. Why it was that Mr. Fuer didn't see those reports, I don't understand. But I know that when they come to us, it's all there. Well, the ones I receive have the same information you were asking for, except the one question that's not asked is the living wage ordinance question and we ask that in committee. That stuff is in it. The last 108, and I'm talking about tax increment finance, we don't call it Genesis LA. We talk about big if funds and 108 funds. And they have detailed reports under each project. Okay? I'm just trying to explain it. I have two of them in my district. I think Mr. Pacheco has some in his district. Mr. Ridley Thomas has some in his district. Ms. Rita Walters has some in his district. And Mr. Padilla has some in his district. I'm just trying to explain how it works. And I welcome this, these motions, the amendments. We've all reached some compromise. And I think that the real scrutiny is going to be as we approve these projects, project per project. And that has to go through the committee process. And just believe me that we haven't spent that much big if monies. I mean, when you look at overall, we've done a lot of groundbreakings and we've done a lot of press conferences, but the end result have been very few projects.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. You spoke three, six and a half minutes. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. There are several items and this continues to evolve. What I would want to do is second the motion to refer the matter to committee. I'm prepared to support the disclosure amendment. It seems to me that's fundamental, that's basic, and we should go forward with that. But the balance in light of the discussion as it continues to evolve seems to me to make a compelling case for it to be referred to committee in a time sensitive manner, and I would second that.
No problem.
Here? Okay, we have. Okay, what do we have before us?
We have a motion to refer it to committee.
No, we're going to refer some of it to committee. 39A.
I would like to speak to that point.
Huh? Okay, Ms. Goldberg.
Yeah. I'd like to understand from the speaker, why you want to, what do you want to send to committee and why?
What I'm prepared to support today is the motion that I think was brought in that speaks to disclosure.
Okay, that's 39A.
And that seems to me to be applicable irrespective to any of the other--
But the part you're not willing to support is what, that you want to go to committee is what? I'm just trying--
The balance of whatever's before us, because I think--
The clarification that living wage--
Ms. Goldberg, let me--
But I just want to understand. I'm asking that--
The balance of whatever is before us.
Well, I would argue, since this is my time and I can't get a clear answer--
Wait a minute. You did get a clear answer. I said I'm supporting A.
Okay.
It's disclosure.
Okay.
And the balance should refer to committee. This came in on rule 16. And it would seem to me that there are some questions that can and should be answered. And I don't know that they're satisfactorily answered in the context of this discussion. That's what I'm suggesting, plain and simple.
Okay. Well, I would urge that we accept 39B as well today because what it does is clarify what is already the reality.
Why state it?
I would urge that we do it now and ask that what gets sent to the committee is how to implement 39A and B, which I do think needs to be discussed in a committee because they need to figure out how to do that. But according to the city attorney's office, 39B, which changes the main motion, is simply a clarification of what already exists. That's why I was having some difficulty understanding why, what a committee would do since the city attorney's office has argued and has stated that they apply to any of these projects. And, you know, so I guess I'm at a loss as to why we need to delay anything when it's only a clarification of existing policy so that nobody leaves thinking that this is not the case. How it gets carried out or what happens next, all of the results of these two motions, I think should go to committee so that they can, the CED committee can figure out how best to implement all of this. But I think that we should make the clarification today and I would urge an I vote.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, and again, hopefully, Mr. Ridley Thomas will understand. Ms. Goldberg is going to be sworn in to the assembly on Monday. And I kind of appreciate that, but she's sure leaving me a lot of work. Part of when this discussion started today, as the motion was originally written, I knew there'd be some discussion. I wanted some clarity as to the work that I had to do. And that's why I wanted it to be heard today. In that process, the parties, and when I talk about the parties, I'm talking about the community groups that are represented in terms of supporting and the activists who've been pushing to make sure this ordinance means something, as well as the developers in Genesis LA, as well as the mayor's office, they sat down and started working on wording. And everybody agreed that the clarity had to be provided and that's the wording that's before you. Now, I agree that when we review each project, these are the kinds of things we do. And that's why I said the information comes, but what doesn't come and we always have to ask is the living wage ordinance question of most of these projects. So to me, whether it goes to committee or not is not an issue. But I think that voting on it would give the clarity to the committee as to what we're really trying to get. And again, I just know that the amendments that are before us is much clearer than the original motion. And that would be A and B. And that's why I just wanted that voted and then send it to committee. Out to committee. So then it'll come back to us after that review.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, you'll be reminded of the fact that there's a broader set of issues that apply with respect to the resources made available by way of public funds to any project when we've talked about the issue of subsidies. Ms. Galanter brought in a motion some time ago, more recent than that, that I brought in a motion. And it was placed before the chief legislative analyst who is working on that matter to bring back before us. I believe that the ad hoc way in which we have made decisions about subsidies and what is tied to those subsidies in terms of what those developers, property owners, et cetera, would afford the constituents in the immediate area and/or otherwise, thereby defending or justifying the issue of public benefit remains before us in a substantial way. So I'm committed to that and I think is a matter of public record. My concern today is there are projects that are in place-- My concern today is there are projects that are in place, there are prospective projects, the evolution of the matter in terms of the original motion, the amendment that Mr. Hernandez brought in to refine it, there's yet another refinement of the amendment that you brought in that some members have. That's the reason I say it ought to go to committee to clarify it. And the only thing, to my way of thinking at this point in time, that has sufficient consensus around the horseshoe is the matter of disclosure. Once again, I think the balance of it ought to be sent to committee and dealt with accordingly. The amendments are being amended as we speak now, and therefore, it seems to me that more work is required in the context of committee, and that's why I maintain my position.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Holden?
Just for clarification, I think the first, 39A, in terms of disclosure, Mr. Thomas, referring that the mayor, are therefore move, the first moving clause, that's what you're really talking about, as what we should approve today?
Yes.
And then all other matters associated with 39A, B, and the original motion be sent to committee?
Correct.
So I think that's clear and brought back at a time when we can send Ms. Goldberg some information, document, and letting her know we've taken the positive and affirmative action on this entire matter. I'd be glad to bring you the document, Ms. Goldberg, especially when I need a vote. All right, I think that's where we are. I think the clerk understands that? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I'm glad Mr. Farrar is not within immediate earshot of this because if 39B was simply a clarification, it wouldn't commingle in the moving part, the CRA and the CRA current debate on how they're going to handle the living wage and the worker retention ordinance. The commingling of that, I just, I see a Trojan horse here. I'm concerned about why there's this commingling being hastily done. I just want to make sure that we're analytically looking at these independent of each other. The Genesis projects should be analyzed, those projects, I believe, we're on the right path with the disclosure, and the CRA should be separate and apart. But by commingling them and linking them together, you've complicated the issue for me for today. Not that it cannot be clarified in further discussions. And the final thing I want to say, and I say this as respectfully as I can, is I understand Ms. Goldberg is going to the Assembly, but I think it really lessens our commitment to a lot of the same policies that Ms. Goldberg has if we act as if her absence means an absence in support for those policies. And I just feel that a lot of us really believe in the living wage, but some of us just don't move as quickly as some of our colleagues, and I want to look at it more closely. So I definitely urge that we move the portions in dispute to committee so we can look at this closely.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Ms. Galanter?
Well, I thought I understood all of this, but I just reread 39B in response to Mr. Pacheco's comments, and I'm not sure what you're talking about commingling here because what 39B actually says is, refers only to Genesis projects. It refers, says shall apply to all Genesis L.A. projects to the extent already set forth in the ordinances and shall continue to do so until such time as the CRA adopts the city council's living wage and worker retention ordinance, at which time such policies will apply to all Genesis L.A. projects anyway. It's the "anyway" that's missing there. But I think that that's what it says. So it's not, all it does is to say we're going to get the jump on the possibility of timing of when CRA adopts this instead of waiting until CRA adopts it to apply it to Genesis L.A., we're going to do it now. Am I, let me ask the mayor, I mean, am I understanding that right? Thank you. So I don't think there is a commingling. I think that it's fair enough to say that we shouldn't go beyond the basic purpose of this motion of the original discussion here, which is the Genesis L.A. project, but I don't think it does.
Ms. Goldberg?
Actually, the point is not when I'm leaving. The point is, is that these projects are now beginning to move. And delay means that we will have no clarification, that it is the will of the council that they include living wage and worker retention. Has nothing to do with when I'm leaving. Has to do with the fact that these things are starting to move. And it was in the course of them starting to move and questions raised by community organizations and them getting a mixed set of answers that led to me saying, since these things are moving, we should clarify our position. That's all this purports to do. The city attorney's office has opined that this is already the effect. I'm simply saying that since there's been some confusion as to whether this was our intent or not, we should speak and say, this is our intent. That's all we're trying to accomplish here. It's not changing any policy, it's not influencing any policy, but it is providing clarification to staff that is involved in setting these up. The mayor's office, the Genesis L.A. people themselves, all agree that these are good clarifications that give them a way to understand what needs to happen. But really, Mr. Pacheco, I appreciate the notion, but it's nothing to do with my leaving. It really has to do with the fact that these projects are moving, and in the absence of these clarifications, there may be the possibility that different people will get different answers. And I don't think that's healthy.
Ms. Goldberg, isn't this the standard city policy?
Yes, it is. But there has been confusion, which is why the need to clarify it.
Well, I don't know if there's any confusion, it's just among us, but if it's--
Wasn't among us.
If it's a city policy, it's a city policy. Okay, what do we have before us now?
Working our way backwards, 39C is Ridley Thomas' motion to move a portion of 39A, the first therefore I move regarding disclosure, and the balance to committee including the Rule 16 motion, 39B, and the remainder of 39A.
Okay.
Just as a point of order, I think, can we do 39A in its entirety first? I think that's a consensus thing, and then move to the controversial stuff when we get there?
Okay.
And all of 39 first?
Thirty--
My motion, the entirety of 39A and the balance to committee.
All right, we have 39A before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Now we have 39B?
No.
B is going to committee.
Motion is to send it to balance to committee.
Okay.
Okay, that's actually motion 39C.
Right, right.
Point of order, Mr. President, if I may. 39C was the following: to move 39A--
Which we've done.
--and the balance to committee. That was 39C.
So now, we're at 39B, whether we adopt it or send it to committee?
Right.
Okay.
Motion is to send it to committee.
Prepare the roll. We're voting the combination of 39--
Send it. Send the balance to committee, that's what's before us.
Being that that's going to happen anyway, I'm asking a ready vote though.
Wait a minute, Mike.
That's my position, I'm just asking--
I didn't understand what you, what did you say, what happened anyway?
It's going to committee either way. Yeah, exactly. So I'm asking for a no vote.
I urge an "I" vote.
All right, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
That is approved.
So now is it going to committee?
Yeah. Now, is there anything else we have to do on that 39?
The remainder of 39 was sent to committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that complete the agenda except for the closed session item?
It completes the agenda except for special number one, which was brought in by Mr. Ridley Thomas regarding the CRA.
Well, I want to recess this council meeting and then take up the special counsel meeting.
Okay, but--
We're not going to comment later. We'll do that later.
Mr. President, Mr. President?
Mr. Holden?
Yeah, point of order, I think it's appropriate, Mr. President. We passed item 22 today and sent it to the commission, Arts, Health and Humanities Commission, based on the city attorney's suggestion that it go there, they review the changes made by Plum, and it comes back here. I just want the record to show that that was a legislative intent, that it go directly to the commission, then it comes directly from the commission back to the council, as the city attorney did, stated earlier. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm not certain what you're stating here. Our position is that this matter, as the council voted upon it today, which was a modification of the planning committee's recommendation to the council, is that that matter now has to go back to the Cultural Heritage Commission for their review.
That's right.
Because it is now a designation as set forth by the council.
Right. And it's the intent, legislative intent of the council that it comes directly from the commission back to the council.
That's up to the council president.
Right. That was the intent--
Whatever you say, Mr. Holden.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We'll recess the council meeting and then go to special, special council meeting. Call the roll on the special council meeting.
Bernstein, Check, Fury, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kozie, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, French, Fox, Walters, Farrar, eleven members present, McCormick, Mr. President.
Okay. Ms. Galanter, item number one. I just wanted to say that I could not attend the meeting this morning, but I want to support that, so.
Yeah, Mr. President, what the committee, such as it was, myself, is recommending approval of the agreement with Cedar Sinai.
We have somebody named Pom Pom Galliuli. Did they want to be heard on this item?
Only if you choose, Mr. President. If not, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, Ms. Galanter moved, and I second it. Is there any discussion, any discussion on special council meeting one? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, forthwith on that. And then we'll adjourn the special council meeting and go back into the regular session. Members of the council, all the items on the November 28 election, election, I think I'm in Florida, all the items on November 28, 2000 will be forthwith because--
Go ahead.
Okay, next item.
Mr. President, special one brought in by Mr. Ridley Thomas. Findings need to be made in support of this motion.
Mr. President, members, this is a motion introduced by Councilman Ridley Thomas, which would have the effect of the city council requesting the city attorney and the chief legislative analyst to prepare and present appropriate documents to the council for adoption that would allow the council to assume the responsibilities of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board. In order for the council to consider Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion, there has to be a finding pursuant to the rules of the city council and the government code, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of the city council subsequent to the posting of today's agenda.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, as it relates to the findings, the controller's audit and the range of issues connected with it, which were issued yesterday subsequent to the posting of the council agenda, seems to me to be sufficient to substantiate the findings, and I would so move.
Mr. President, I'd like to argue on the findings--
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. Ridley Thomas, the motion is asking the council to take over the CRA without it even going to committee. I mean, and it's not like we're not going to have a council meeting tomorrow or next week or the week afterwards. It seems kind of drastic to be bringing it as a special.
Not asking.
I mean, we just had debate on a Rule 16 motion--
Right.
--and the lack of understanding of the issues. This kind of seems like the opposite extreme.
Well, let me explain why it isn't, if I may. You and I both, for a long period of time, have worked on this issue, and you know how many committees--
And I understand the complexities of that issue because I've worked on it for a long time.
And I'm simply suggesting--
This is my time, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
And I'm going to take some of it if you'll permit me to.
No, I'm not going to permit you to.
Well, then I won't take it.
You just voted against me, you know? Why should I take it?
Mr.--
But who voted with you?
I think--
Who voted with you earlier so you wouldn't be alone?
I think Mr. Ridley Thomas is out of order.
Mr. Hernandez has a floor.
This is my time. But the bottom line, members of the council, again, I think this is a serious matter that should be considered, and the council should review it. And I'm not sure it has to happen as a special. And that's all I'm trying to say today. And we just refer it to committee and ask for a date certain that we can deal with it properly.
Okay. That item is going to committee?
We can't substantiate the findings, is that what you're saying, Mr. President? In view of the fact that we--
You go ask him.
Who is it? The person who I joined in when there were only two no votes a little bit ago, that he quickly forgot?
Okay. I have a short memory.
Yeah, that's okay.
Mark, what's the motion?
Mr. Ridley Thomas, move the findings.
Right. Now, Mr. President, I'm prepared to defer to the ruling of the chair in this regard. I do think we have information that is compelling in and of itself. This is not a new issue. The effort here is simply to request of the legislative analyst and the city attorney to prepare the documents. Obviously, they come back to us for disposition. There is no hiding place when it comes to the number of issues that continue to confront us with respect to the CRA. And ultimately, we are responsible, and we are making decisions on huge sums of money without getting the proper information. And if we had oversight, is my argument, perhaps we can get some of this clarified, corrected. And the number of instances in which we are faced with allegations of corruption in the police department now and the CRA, we have to do something about it. And that's the thrust of the motion. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you. Before I call Mr. Pacheco next, let me clarify motion 39A, where it says name all of the developers. We want to make sure that they name the principals as well as the companies.
Correct.
Okay? All right, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Galanter?
I was just going to move the previous question--
Okay, that's fine.
--so we can send this to committee.
Yeah, all right. You can say both. I didn't say both. There's a distinct part.
You said one and mumbled the other, it's okay.
Did he want to move previous question? Prepare the roll on the previous question.
Yeah, so we have to vote no on the findings in order for it to go to committee?
To send it to committee.
Yeah. The motion is to send it to committee?
Wait, wait. The findings.
Okay, vote--
We're currently voting on the previous question.
This is on the previous question.
Do the rule. No objection to that.
Okay.
Okay. The motion is to send it to committee?
No, we're still on the findings, aren't we? Did we adopt the findings?
No, we haven't.
We did not.
We'll send it all to committee.
We'll send it to committee, we won't take a vote.
Yeah. Okay, the next item.
No, it's just going to committee.
I'd take care of it.
The special became a Rule 16 motion.
Mr. President, that is all that is currently before council except for item 42, so now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Ruth, public comment, we have people want to be heard.
All right, as you know, we have a, oh, that's a different one, all right. We have a 10-minute time limit for public comment, and although we are sometimes able to be more flexible, we have two very important closed session items on us today. I have four people who have asked to speak, so I'm going to call you in the order in which I have the cards and ask you to be mindful of the fact that there are people behind you, and the 10 minutes is for everyone put together. First is Pearl White, followed by Barbara Killian, then Winola Smith, and Millian Gabri Jesus, if I'm pronouncing it properly. And in view of the fact that there are four of you, if you will tolerate it, here's one who wants to speak before no agency, one who wants to speak before me, another one who wants to speak before me, and another one who wants to address the council. So first is Pearl White.
We give all our time to Pearl White.
Well, but you, that's the first three speakers. The fourth speaker is on a different item.
Correct.
All right, so you get, you can have three quarters of it, you get seven and a half minutes, and we'll save the rest for Mr. Gabri Jesus. Go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chairman.
Pull the mic over closer to you so we can all hear you.
Okay. Madam Chairman and the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak-- Okay, Madam Chairman and the City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm so glad to be here, because it's the first time I've been over in this cold room. But it's very necessary that we have to come to the City Council to ask you to stop the PACE program, because we're not going to stop here today like we've been. I've been doing this in this area now for over 55 years, and we're not going to be able to stop. We have any difference with our City Councilperson now, and she doesn't want to talk with us. I've been before the advisory committee, they wouldn't even let me speak. That was in February, first day was in February. So now we have to take action on the PACE program. If you're not, we're going to do everything that we possibly can. We're not going to take this anymore, Madam Councilwoman. We can't do it. And so whatever you can do to be able to listen to us, you better listen, because we're not going to do it. We're old people, not going to be put out. We're not going to have you coming in our yard telling us what we can do and what we can't do. We can't do it, and we can't borrow any money to fix up our houses and everything, because we wouldn't be able to pay. I lost one home, you see, because of that. And so we're going to do this in the area. We're asking if you're down, since we have so many rich people out there. We have two census tracts, 2732, 2733. That's where the poor people live in Venice. You can work those two census tracts, we can work the Skill Center, all the programs that we can go and do the work, because we trained the people to do the work in our area. We want to go back on past history that we can do it. When this happened in this area, we brought the people in the community together. We're tired of the city hall subsidizing crime in our area, and especially our councilperson. That isn't it. We're asking for a recall under. We're going to do everything we can. I'm an old woman, I'll be 81-years-old on December 21st, and I can assure you, I've been doing it all the time, I don't telephone, whatever I can do, and we're going to do it. Whatever you can do to be able to stop this, to give us some relief in this area, please try to do it today, because they won't give us any appointment. We can't go to our councilwoman's office, we can't talk to her. Total down our vegan, all the things that we do positive in our area, they're taking them away from us. gentrification is here, and I've been hollering about it, I hollered about it until I got so I couldn't holler anymore, and I can't come anymore. But some way, somehow, we're going to have to get in there to be able to see what we can do. So please try to ask questions, or whatever you can do to be able to do it, because I told them if I had to crawl, I was going to stay here today, so that we could see what we can do in our area. And if you're not, I can tell you, I have so many things that I would do, you may want to go and put me in jail, because we're not going to take this in our area anymore. It's gone far enough. So please, Madam Councilwoman, go and do it, because if we got somebody to gather money, you don't have much longer in office, to go and get you out of office, we're going to go and do that, since we need to fly us out, to be able to sue it, because the idea you're doing people like this in the area, who've given all their services, you won't even let me get a welfare check, SSI check, because I don't get any, you wouldn't have me, because I couldn't pass no physical. But what can you do? You wouldn't pay me for the work that I've done all of these years. And I've done the work, I've got proof of it. So what are you going to do? We have young people around here doing it. They're fully qualified. So the answer to the pair, maybe something they did is bringing them out in the area, because they're speaking for themselves. They don't need you to speak for them, but all they want to do is for you to go and carry the message from this community. But you don't have the idea what you have done to this community. Now, anybody that can go doing anything like this to an area that we live in, we're afraid to get out all the things we have, the killings and everything we have when we speak out, yes, but we still keep speaking out. We keep on doing it. And so whatever you can do, don't let us leave here today unless you can give us something that we can do. And if you can't, we're taking the next step up. Thank you very much.
Now on Mr. Gabri Jesus. Let me just point out that Mrs. White and her group have a meeting in my office scheduled for tomorrow.
I actually wanted to speak on this item, too.
I'm sorry, you did not fill out a card, and I already... Everybody just yielded their time to Mrs. White, and it's Mr. Gabri Jesus' turn in public comment. So if you would let Mr. Gabri Jesus have the microphone, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. President and all councilmen, today, on behalf of 100 drivers and myself, and public auto small minority business person. City council have power to give us for individual taxi drivers, once for all, to have our own company to serve needy people in the area of C and D, Silver Lake, South Bay Area, and East Los Angeles. I can open our office in the center of above area I mentioned as soon as approved by the city council. I had someone discover to invest more than $2 to $3 million without penny it cost us if we are fully fulfilled with the three months to provide our service. You can cancel our franchise. You are also proud in the city of Los Angeles to serve the bandit problem, like Santa Monica, Culver City, Hollywood, and Beverly Hills. Every company have second unit with existing company. When come to Los Angeles, they are illegal taxi when they come to in the city of Los Angeles. And I wrote a letter, one page and a half, the first page says to the mayor, second page, copy to all councilmen. And I served over 20 years as a cab driver since 1980. During all this year, I have been taxi driver in the city of Los Angeles. It has always been my dream to become an owner of taxi franchise, so that I am serve my customer to the best of my ability. In 1995, I invested my money, time, and energy to purchase a single taxi from UTI and the Bell Cup Company. Because of the problem faced by management of UTI and the Bell Cup Company, and mainly because of the ethnic strife between the Russian and the Latino owners, I lost my investment when the city took away from Bell Cup Company 120 vehicle per meet. In 1996, I joined Yellow Cup, Anything Yellow, an independent owner driver. In 1997, Yellow Cup Company was sold to L.A. Taxi during this transfer ownership. My car was involved in automobile accident, not because of my fault. Because of the structure of the taxi system, the property damage to my taxi was not paid. The company refused to either repair my taxi or reimburse me for the damage. As a result of this disagreement, management of L.A. Taxi and Yellow Cup Company deny me the right to operate my taxi under the franchise. I still have the city's seal, 3094, which was issued to my cab number 6102. I request the assistance of the DOT in this matter, but it has not been helpful, because of I lost my only source of income, which becomes a major issue and the cause of my divorce, and the final foreclosure of my house. Since then, I've been billing with DOT and the city council, but without any progress. In May of 2000, I had prepared proposal to submit to the city and respond to the RFA and NOS, put out of by the city. Unfortunately, the taxi driver from Bell Cup Company robbed me of the proposal and other personal belongings. This took place about four days prior to the deadline of submitted of proposal. I did file a report with the Culver City Police Department, but DOT did not consider my most fortune and denied my request for the extension to submit to a proposal. Mr. Hernandez, councilman, he knows, and I went there also, I reported. He tried to help me, the DOT ignorant, and also very unacceptable my demand. I am now asking the owner of mayor, the city council, to help me in getting franchise, which the city is now pondering the issue to existing taxi company they already did. In order to fulfill the requirement to operate, I've incorporated a company under the California Taxi Drivers, Inc. franchise. I have a list of over 100 per meet taxi drivers. In addition, I have reached agreement with CTD, Inc., and have been assured by Navco that will taxis up to 120 still be cooked with Navco guidance and the tracking unit, including central dispatch system with a modern technology.
Mr. Gabri Jesus, I have to ask you to wind up. We're over the time.
Yes, I'm almost finished. I'm fully prepared to understand the management and operation taxi franchise, therefore, I'm begging the owner of mayor and the city council to use this influence to grant me a franchise. I'm from Africa, and I would like to have, no, the whole pizza, I say, the slice of pizza. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I would like a slice of pizza myself right now. All right, that closes the public comment period, and the next items on our agenda are items in closed session. However, we do have a request to be heard with respect to 42A, and so before we go into closed session, we are going to hear from Mr. Bert Voorhees. With... Right? Well, we might as well. This is general comments, and so can I ask you to keep it brief, and then when you're done, we're going to try to get this resolved. Pull the mic up, though.
Good afternoon.
All right, so hold on one second. Members of the council, this is item 42A, which we are going to discuss in closed session. For those of you in the audience who are not here for this item, at the conclusion of Mr. Voorhees' testimony, we're going to ask you, have to ask you to leave the room. And members of the council, we are down to 10, so don't anybody leave. Okay, now.
Good afternoon, Ms. President and members of the city council. My name is Bert Voorhees, and I represent Sergeant Mitchell Grobson. I have a daughter who is five and a half years old. Her name is Audrey. This morning, when I was driving her to school, she asked me what I was going to be doing with her day, and I told her that I was coming here. I told her that a year and a half before she was born, this city made certain promises. Those promises were made to ensure fair and equal treatment to the gay and lesbian employees who work for this city. The city has not kept those promises, I told her. They brought in an outside investigator, who told them that they have not kept their promises. "Why haven't they kept their promises?" she asked me. I had to tell her that I don't know. I do not know. When you look at 42A, the item on the agenda, it looks like you're just voting on whether or not to settle a lawsuit, but frankly, that really isn't what you're voting on. You're voting on whether or not this city, seven and a half years after it made promises to its workers, will keep those promises. You're voting on whether or not this city is ready to embrace its gay and lesbian employees or not. If you vote to reject the settlement proposal, you send a clear message that this city is not going to keep its promises, and you send a clear message that it is not ready to embrace its gay and lesbian employees. I don't think you want to send that message. So you need to do one of two things. Either accept the proposal, or if there are items that you believe need further work, send a representative of this body, and request that the mayor's office also send one to meet with us and the city attorney in further mediations, so we can work this out. Do not simply reject the proposal and send us back to litigation, I urge you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're now going to go into...
I have a couple items to clarify. Item number 38, that was continued until August... Or excuse me, until December 12th. I think they need December 15th on that matter, item 38.
All right, let's do that to December 15th.
And item 42, that matter, a request from the city attorney to continue one date to November 29th.
Sorry, which one is that?
42B.
42B?
Yes, that's Elani Penny versus City.
Okay. I think 38 was supposed to be to December 13th, the Wednesday, not the Friday, right?
It was notified that the controller is not available.
I think the auditor is not available, that's why we're making the change.
And so continuation of 42B.
All right, so 42B is continued until tomorrow.
Yes.
Is that what you said? Yes.
Do you wish to clear the desk?
Might as well clear the desk, and can we do that while we're clearing the room?
Yes.
Which might save a little time here. I wish he hadn't mentioned that slice of pizza. Okay, clear the desk, let's go.
Motion for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Councilmember requests to be excused from council. Councilmember Fuhr requests to be excused on January 10th to leave at 11:20. This meets policy for personal business.
All right, we'll let him do that.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on Wednesday, January 10th. This meets policy for city business.
I guess we have to let him do that, too.
Councilmember Walters and Councilmember Wax request to be excused from today for illness.
Okay, they haven't broken a quorum. I can see Mr. Ridley Thomas looking at the door.
And Councilmember Ms. Kowski requests to be excused on January 2nd for personal business, meets policy.
All right, that is approved.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
I wish to move reconsideration of special one in exchange for a pizza.
Let's try to get this show on the road here. All right, so we are not clear yet, guys. Hang on. The council is... Okay, anything else?
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear. Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions? Oh, we have one. All right, would everyone please rise for adjourning motions? You guys are slow on the uptake here. Ms. Chick?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask colleagues that we adjourn in memory of William Mason, someone who's done a lot of good things for our area, but not so well-known for it. He was the veteran Californian historian, and long the curator of the Southern California History at the Los Angeles County Museum of Natural History. He died November 15th in the city he worked so long to explain, and he was 69-years-old. I was especially interested in reading about this man as we look at forming a museum for our city to tell the story of this area, and Mr. Mason was especially well-known because he told us long before the word multi-ethnic came to be associated with Los Angeles. He was writing and lecturing and informing Angelenos that our area had been multi-ethnic from its very first encampment in 1781. And I just want to read one quote from the L.A. Times obituary on Mr. Mason. "Of the 44 original pobladores colonists who founded Los Angeles, only two were white," Mason wrote in an op-ed piece for the Times in 1975. "Of the other 42, 26 had some degree of African ancestry, and 16 were Indians or mestizos, people of mixed Spanish and Indian blood." He had a lot to teach us, we still have a lot to learn, but William Mason, who leaves his wife Wasana, his stepson Marvin, and his daughter Monica, we have a lot to be thankful for in terms of what he taught us.
Mr. Hernandez?
Madam President, members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in the name of Salvador Lopez. Salvador Lopez indirectly has touched us through his sister, Minnie Bafa Lopez, who works for the gas company--
Second.
--and also is the president of Hope. He was her brother, and he died of a massive heart attack on November 30th. Basically, the funeral will be held at Magdalena Catholic Church in Camarillo, and the family has asked that, in lieu of flowers, that donations be sent to the Sal Lopez Fund in care of the church.
Mr. Holden?
Madam President, members, Mr. Peter Payne, he died November 25th, passed away Sunday from complication of cancer at the age of 78. He was also known as Gags by his friends and family. He worked for the Scapular House, a work furlough facility, helping ex-con transition back into society. Services would be held December 1st, 1:00 p.m. at Holy Cross Cemetery and Marcherie. Certainly, he'll be missed.
Anybody over here? All right. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Carolyn Craven, who passed away last week after a long and truly horrible battle with Crohn's disease. She was a very lively, interesting woman who turned her 60s activism into a very successful career as a journalist, mainly at KQED in the Bay Area. She's survived by her parents, her twin sister, Sala Steinbach, and her son Gabriel.
All aboard.
I think that's it. Call the roll. Thank you, we are adjourned. See you all mañana.